Call the meeting to order, 7 o'clock. Like to remind you, this is recorded. Members are remote, currently remote is Michelle Horegon, Anasizik, Dana Lara, and Michelle Bailey. All votes will be taken by roll call. We'll probably go in reverse alphabetical order tonight, so we'll see how that goes. And if there are citizens who want to make comments, we would allow those now. So if you do want to make a comment, I guess, Mary Beth, are you the host?
Yep, I can go ahead and take a look. Anybody's raising their hand?
If somebody's raising their hand, Mary Beth can recognize you. If you do decide to speak, we will hear you for three minutes. We'd ask that you give everybody a chance to speak who wants to speak. And we'll probably limit this to like 15 minutes max. So, is there anybody who wanted to make comments tonight? Saw something pop up in the chat, but I didn't see what that was. Nobody's raising their hand. Okay, we're gonna give you guys like another minute if anybody wants to say anything. I have to figure out how to, okay, and then... So Peter Walzick and Stacy Metternich have just joined. They are also joining us remotely. Doesn't look like we have any citizens' comments. Something I wanted to say about that. Oh, so at this point, we will turn off the chat. The chat has become distracting to those of us who are in the meeting because you see the questions coming up and it's just distracting and it's not allowing us to concentrate on the meeting. That means that we are also not focusing on the business. We're trying to focus on the questions at the same time, so it's not in the best interest of the committee. And also, if you were here in person, we would not allow you to just shout out your questions. So we're trying to replicate our meeting as close as possible. However, for tonight, the Q and A section has been turned on. So if you would like to place a question in the Q and A, and later on, we may view those and we might answer them, but there's no guarantees. But it definitely will help us to gather frequently asked questions, which we will, well, not we, Mary Beth and a whole bunch of little elves and angels will be preparing answers to frequently asked questions.
And Michelle, I just wanted to let you know that I do have one member of our community that wanted to speak.
Okay.
So I'm gonna open her mic.
Super.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, if you can just identify yourself by name and give us your address.
Hi, this is Reba Eaton, I live...
Sorry, Ms. Eaton, we're having a hard time hearing you. If you want to try again.
Can you guys hear me?
Now we can.
Okay. Did you hear my address?
We did not.
Okay, sorry. My name's Reba Eaton, and I live at 10 and 1/2 Edel Avenue in Wyndham. And my question is this. Last week, when Mary Beth spoke, there was a lot of... My impression was that it had already been decided that it was going to be a hybrid model this year. Or was it last week or the week before? I can't remember now. My question is, my understanding is, you guys are voting on that tonight, isn't that right?
That is not correct. We'll be hearing the options that are gonna be available this year and we'll be voting on August the 10th.
So you guys won't even be voting on what... You guys won't even have decided what model we'll be using until the 10th of October?
That is correct, but you may also be aware of...
Not October, August.
August, sorry. Okay, so nobody's finding anything out at this point. And people who are having, who are considering, like for me, for myself and my husband, we are both working professionals. We have to find alternative arrangements for our kids if they're not gonna be in school Monday through Friday. We have from August 10th until when school starts to make those arrangements, put them in another school, or put them in some sort of another childcare.
Yep, we will be talking, we will be talking about the change in the date that school starts as well. But just know that every district in Massachusetts is in the same place, so you're with a lot of other people.
Yeah, that's terrible.
We agree, and we're sorry to put, we were in that spot. We totally agree, we get it.
It's really, yeah, so I think that it's creating a lot of anxiety in the community. And I think that, you know, the sooner, the sooner we would know, the better. Because if, you know, if you guys, if you guys know, I guess, then...
We do not know.
How can you be, how can you be planning without knowing?
Michelle, jump in just for a moment. And I think where we're headed will be clearer as the presentation unfolds this evening. So I ask you to hang on a little bit for that.
Yep.
But what you're going to hear from me this evening is which model we think is most likely for the start of the fall, and then explaining how the shifting back and forth between models can occur.
Right.
Has asked us to be prepared for all different models. So I think you'll find some information this evening that will be valuable. But one of the very first slides says, "Subject to change."
Right, I understand that with, with what we're all experiencing here, there could be some changes and going back and forth. One of the other questions that I had was, if a vaccine becomes available, say in October or November, and we've already gone into a hybrid or a full-time at-home model, and the vaccine becomes available and there's a widespread vaccine being given out, is there a possibility of us going back to school when people are immunized?
Clarify that tonight.
Yep.
Okay.
Great. Great, thank you.
Thank you for letting me talk, okay.
Thank you for staying on because I think Mary Beth has a lot to say.
Awesome, thank you.
She's very busy. She's been very busy, along with Tom Geary, who is joining us remotely tonight. And so we'll go to the first order of business, which is to hear the school's space feasibility study, and also to talk about some of the work that they're doing about making our buildings safe.
And Michelle, before you, there is one more hand raised. Do you want to take that at this time, or?
Yeah, if we can.
Okay. Elizabeth Train is the person who was identified in the, in the chat.
Okay, starting at three minutes.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes, can you just give us, Elizabeth, thank you.
Yes, Elizabeth Train, 786 Bay Road in Hamilton.
Thank you.
I have a couple things to say quickly, and I will try to remain succinct. But some of my concerns, obviously, everybody has a ton of concerns, and I share Reba's that she just talked her way through. And the inability to plan is obviously difficult. So I share all of those concerns. And I think we, as a district, probably could have been doing a better job for, planning for all eventualities. We have known for some time that there is a real risk that the schools will need to go at least in part, remote for part of the year. So I think we probably, as a group, should have been doing a stronger job at preparing for that, especially given the fact that, sort of to my second point, the spring was, I think, pretty much a fail in remote teaching and learning. I have three kids in the district, and none of them had anything approximating, like a full school day or a full curriculum. And I think we need to figure out a way to deliver a more wholesome and more robust teaching and learning experience because it seems inevitable that at some point in the coming six months, we are remote, hybrid, or whatever we all want to call it. My last comment pertains to the scheduling because it's my understanding that due to the inability...
We're not hearing you, Elizabeth.
Mary Beth, Elizabeth.
Third point, can you hear me now?
We can, thank you. But now we can't.
You're muted, Elizabeth. You're still muted.
Am I here?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll be really quick. Third point pertains to basically AP classes, and what I understand is pretty typical and traditional, not only in our district, but in others across the state, to deliver a lot of AP prep work over the summer, preceding junior and senior years of high school. And other districts are doing this. I have friends in other districts across our state who have children pretty engaged all summer in prep work and summer work for their AP classes. And it's my understanding that due to our district's inability to get any sense of a schedule together, that we have not been asking that of our high school students. Those are my three comments. I hope we can do better.
Thank you. All right. So... We're ready to go, Mary Beth, with the first item on the agenda, or the second item, depending on how you want to structure them. Because they're both, they both have to do with making our space safe.
Great, and the first item on the agenda is for our director's...
Oh, I'm sorry, I went down to three, yeah. We're at three, right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and now share my screen so I can share the presentation. Okay, can everybody see my screen? All right.
Yes, we can, thank you, Tom.
All right, thank you. So upon Superintendent, Superintendent Baneos's arrival to the district, she tasked my team, along with the administrative team, to take a look at our buildings and conduct a space analysis. So I'll roll through the process really quickly. Each and every square foot of learning environment was measured by hand, which was a valuable exercise, not only for the current environment, but also for future planning as well. We evaluated the existing furniture, set up model classrooms. We took those model classrooms and developed a formula that worked and made it easy to calculate the estimated occupancy in each classroom district-wide. And after we were finished, Desi provided us with a tool that came up with very similar results, and I'll get into the numbers shortly. So as far as measuring spaces, we looked at these as, they're not just boxes, right? So some may think that you can squeeze in more desks than is feasible, but you have to take into consideration protrusions from the walls, HVAC equipment, accessibility to hand washing, safe egress, and just general circulation and safe circulation around the classroom. So using the formula for three-foot social distancing was 27.38 feet per, 27.38 square feet per student. So as you can see, for three-foot distancing, the max capacity is compared to the 19, 20 enrollment. The numbers at the middle school and high school seem abnormally high, but that would be using small group instruction spaces, current phys ed spaces, and other spaces that aren't typically associated with the general educational program. I also included a table here using the Canon Design Tool provided by Desi. And we were, in our calculations that we developed within the district, we're a little more conservative on space, knowing that every classroom has its own nuances. Some have egress that dumps right outside, some egress into other classrooms. Some have hand washing sinks that you have to keep open. And of course, door placement, it varies across the district. I should note that with the asterisk that you see on both of these tables leads me to this next slide. So when we're talking about max capacity in the buildings, we do have to acknowledge that we'd need adult-facing students to optimize every single square foot, right? So in order to fully optimize all of the open learning spaces, additional staffing would need to be put in place. And it also, these square footage numbers, they don't take into account the educational programming, including the small group instruction spaces, the therapeutic spaces that typically eat up more square footage per student. So the next two slides are schematics that we received after we created our model classrooms throughout the district. And we did seem to be right in line with what was recommended. Excuse me. We carried a six-foot teacher space located close to the teaching, main teaching wall in each classroom, and then built the classrooms from there because our professionals need ample space to be able to move around the classrooms. So this is a schematic as it looks for six-foot social distancing. And in the next slide, you'll see what three-foot physically-distanced classrooms look like. So one of our model classrooms, we took with three-foot social distancing. This is a picture from a classroom at the Cutler School. As you can see here, we have the two measuring sticks dictating the three-foot on center from seat to seat to be able to accommodate 24-student desks. Anybody who's familiar with learning environments realizes this is a big change as to what we're accustomed to seeing in our modern school facilities. So moving on to six-foot distancing, again, this is a big change from what we're accustomed to seeing in our classrooms. March 12th is the date I like to refer back to. Students walked into the classrooms. They weren't accustomed to seeing desks in rows, right? Every classroom at the elementary level had tables where students were allowed to collaborate, and sometimes sit four to six students per table. So we went down to the basement and were able to get single-student desks to be able to model some of these classrooms. So the information provided, here are some of the actions taken to date. We secured an order of 1,347 single-student desks, expected to arrive before August 24. This was to be able to maximize whether we're in a three-foot social distancing model, six-foot social distancing model. I think that each student having their own space to be able to put their belongings and be able to work on is important as we try to socially distance everybody. We identify the items that we need to be long-term stored, secure quotations for portable storage units if we cannot accommodate the storage within the school building. And by securing the labor force to assist our custodial team members with, you know, the daunting task of installing and adjusting over 1,000-student desks, we'll be bringing on more student workers under our student work program. So far to date, I've been rolling that out slowly to just basically one student per school to be able to help the custodians to date. But I'll be augmenting that labor force as we get the delivery dates confirmed with the manufacturer. So that brings me up to the end of the space analysis piece of the slideshow. Madam Chair, I'm not sure if you want to open up to questions on this portion, or if I should roll through the next two sub-bullets.
I think you need to do the next two bullets.
Fair enough, thank you. So another piece, working off of the Desi guidance, was kind of thinking outside of the box, to use a term that's probably I hear about 15, 20 times a day from everybody in my path coming into contact with. So one of the pieces that was listed in the Desi guidance, the original document that came out, was to look at community space and see what is available. Now, if we had a severe crunch for space, I think we could rely on some of our community partners. So I had, I call it a conceptual conversation with a person that was sort of on the board for the community house. And I also spoke with the director of the Hamilton Wyndham Recreation Department just to say, hey, we may tap you as a resource, but I didn't want to sound the alarm bells for their groups yet because it seems to me that we have adequate space as it is. A major challenge with using some of the community spaces is the availability of having a school nurse on site. Some of the security protocols we put in place, and the cleaning protocols we put in place. If they're, if everybody's under our roof and on our property, we have a little more control and can give more assurance to the general public that we're doing everything we can. And I know those groups would do everything they can as well. But having them under our roof gives us, you know, the most resources at our disposal. So next, I started looking at outdoor learning environments. It's been a success so far at the Winthrop School for the summer E S Y program. So part of our special education programs that run over the summer have taken advantage of the three tents that we rented for this summer. So at the Winthrop, it actually works out really nice because we have three classrooms that egress directly out to the tents. So the layout works out really well. I've surveyed the other sites throughout the district. And on the next table, I put together just a rough cost estimate as, you know, if this is the direction that the district would want to move in, here's the approximate costs and then the quantities that we'd be able to fit. And a good way, having the students being able to access restrooms and whatnot. So if it's okay, should I hold on this slide and move on to the district ventilation?
No, I think we'll take questions now. If you could stop sharing and we'll see.
Sure.
Thank you. Um, so that gives you an idea of how our space could be used, and then an outside-of-the-box or outside-of-the-building idea. Does anybody have questions for Tom about that? Hi, Peter. Go ahead.
Your same raise. Okay, yeah, that was one of the questions that came up in the frequently asked questions. I saw that there was a cost associated with it. But can, one of the questions that came up, can we use Gordon College, Appleton Farms, trustees, buildings of worship, tents, parks, fields for in-person learning?
Yeah, I think you could. I believe that we're fortunate throughout the district to have the, the space to accommodate our students. Going offsite, of course, would, you know, there are some challenges that we would have to overcome. The big one for me is just nursing services on-site, especially in the current environment we're in. You know, that's a big sticking point for us, you know, as a team.
Right. One of, one of the other frequently asked questions was, can the high school, probably this is for the superintendent, but can the high school be remote only while we reserve and use that high school space for middle school and elementary school students who need more support?
Thank you for that. Two thoughts around that. One is that it is not so much the space issue as Tom was talking about, but when you're taking a class and breaking it up across two classrooms, you need two teachers. And so it's not so much the question of finding the space as it is in thinking about almost doubling our staffing, which is not a financial reality. The other piece that came up in a lot of comments was a concern for parents that models are consistent across all levels so that there's child care for siblings. So that's also something we've been very mindful of.
And Tom, just interested in the tent that's been used for the summer program at Winthrop. What size is currently being used and how many students are currently being taught?
Sure, that does vary day to day, but I'll, I can call you back if you have the access to the slide that I presented of the photos of the tent. Right now, we're looking at maxing out 12 students. And it all depends on which furniture is used. So we have 20 by 30 tents over at the Winthrop right now. Of course, the groups are a lot smaller for the E S Y program, but I think 10 to 12 students, along with instructional staff, would fit for the 20 by 30 tents that we're using.
Anna had a question.
Even raised my hand. Okay, Tom, I have two questions for you. The first one is, you said that you purposely excluded therapeutic spaces from your space analysis, and I'm curious to know why? Because those therapeutic spaces are important, and I expect that we'll have kids who have high needs potentially in them. So why were we not considering them in our planning?
I think that that would be related to the table, right? And that's where it's difficult to take that off of raw square footage and be able to say that a general ed classroom could use some of those spaces. That was the reason.
But are we concerned about space for students who use those therapeutic areas? I mean, is, was that, I guess I just want to make sure that we're factoring in the needs of students who might have use of those spaces and making sure that we can still make use of them if needed for those students, given the distancing guidelines that we have to follow.
And I can pop in here, Anna, to respond to that. So part of the space analysis, analysis that we're tasked to do through the E S Y is to look at pure square footage versus student enrollment and three-foot and six-foot social distancing. You see that those numbers, if you, if you purely calculate on that, you can actually get the, all the students physically in the building. When we get to my recommendations, you're going to see that because of things like ensuring that we have the appropriate learning spaces for some of our most vulnerable students, for all students, we are not recommending that, that the, the fall model would be to return all in person.
Okay. My second, oh, sorry.
No, just despite the fact, when you look at those charts, you will see that physically, could you actually fit them all in there? Yes.
Yeah, no, I got, I got, I was just concerned about those spaces because those spaces are important, especially for that population. My next question, Tom, had to do with storage. So since we are trying to be really smart and thoughtful about where we're putting students, I just wanted to find out where are you planning to store furniture we're not using? Because in the scheme of importance, I feel like housing students is way more important than housing furniture. So I'd be curious to know what the cost implications would be if we did put furniture offsite, and just verifying that we're not essentially using really valuable space that could be used for students by putting desks and tables and things we're not gonna use. So where are we gonna put the tables that we're not gonna use?
I wish I had that answer for you tonight. That is still going to take some efforts to actually plan on what's going where. Now that we, as a leadership team, go into meeting, meeting all together next week, that's one of my key items that I have to get straightened out with building administration as well. Because, just to use a quick comparison, if you were to build a new school building, it's about $450 a square foot for learning spaces. And, you know, using that figure, you don't want to use that valuable square footage to store furniture that can be thrown in a box outside.
So, yeah, if we had to rent a storage locker or some other kind of place to put the things we're not using, I would much rather spend the money that way than some other way. So I guess, as you figure that out, I just wanted to express some preference about who is most important, and I would advocate that the students are more important than the old desks and furniture.
I'm 100% with you. So it's, ideally, we'd have all spaces open for students, be able to maximize that square footage. You know, we'll just have to see how much, what's the volume that we have to store? And then are we going to use that years down the road? Or, you know, that's, that's the question that's yet to be determined. And I feel we have the adequate time and minds to put towards that task.
Great, thank you.
Stacy, you had your hand up a second ago.
Yeah, Tom, I noticed that on the tents, you only had like one tent for the high school, but you had it for the other schools a lot more. So I'm just curious why you didn't have more tents when there is, it seems there is space.
Sure, so I surveyed the schools... Sure, um, so I surveyed the schools and Grant, we could put tents out on the athletic fields, but then when it comes to accessibility to restrooms and accessibility for all students, I decided to, just for pricing purposes, being able to put one close to one of the rear entrances of the school, and I'm just trying to get that size. Because it was a little bigger than the other elementary school tents.
Yeah, I understand. I'm just, I guess I'm concerned for the high school and getting kid, some of the kids back to school and that. Um, you know, they might not come back like at the high school level, and that really concerns me. And I want to make sure that the high school has kids coming back to the high school partly.
Sure, sure. So I I hope that um this, you know, these are just quotations really for discussion purposes. Um, I have not signed a contract because again, these um, you know, the tents were never factored into a budget when we presented um a few folks in the winter. I listed, you know, the tents and where they would be going just for discussion purposes to at least spark the idea. Um, we could look at, you know, other spaces that we could install them at the high school and middle school as well.
That would be awesome, and I think we should take, you know, there's a lot of people that have barns in that area in um both Hamilton and Wyndham because we're in a horse community, and maybe some of those community members might offer for free their barn space if we need to store furniture.
Yeah, yeah, right. I know I know a barn that stores furniture a lot um for other purposes. Uh, Dana, you had a question.
Um, so I was gonna say two things. One was that, which it seems like a much easier ask to the community to ask perhaps for someone to store furniture. Um, that seems much more to me, much more reasonable than asking to host students with all the kind of challenges that that brings. Um, so that sounds like an excellent suggestion. I just wanted to ask Tom about the um, I believe the slide said that we use secured in order of thirteen hundred desks. Um, does that mean that they've been, what does that mean? Secured in order? Does that mean they've been?
So that means we have.
In the basement, what did that?
Note, that is um competing against all districts across the country. Um, and being able to um meet the lead times, we have a contract to have desks onsite with a vendor. So we purchased over thirteen hundred individual desks for the district. And when I say secure the order, it's very competitive right now, and I'm confident that they will be in our hands within two weeks.
Tom, my question has to do with um, so the 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 cost here for the tents is to rent them until November first, is that correct?
Correct. I believe that's the date I had. Uh, November, no, I'm sorry, September one to November fifteen.
Okay, okay. I knew there was one somewhere. Um. And are you envisioning that furniture would live outside in those tents overnight? Is that?
No, as we do with the Winthrop School, uh furniture is taken out and then it's returned back in the building at night.
Okay, um, and did you look at what it costs to buy a tent versus to rent a tent?
I have not, and there are a few good reasons why. Um, the first being the labor associated with installing them. Um, the district is now down two out of the three maintenance workers that would typically have that task assigned. Um, when you rent, the company that, you know, is providing the services goes through the permitting process with the towns as well. So they pull the permit with the town and, you know, they do it every day. So also storing the tents afterwards might become a challenge when we're, you know, have that many um tents and, you know, the sheer size of them uh might become a challenge because, you know, as we discussed before, uh, space is a premium in the building and, you know, storage is always tough in our schools.
And can you tell us how many people would fit in the thirty by sixty and at a six feet spacing?
Is there a way I could get back to like an answer back to you? I don't have that info right in front of me. Because I can be able, I can get a rendering as well to see what it looks like.
And I'd also like to know what it is at twelve feet.
Sure.
Be fifty, wouldn't it?
Well, it has to be like this way and this way, and I I don't know if you can, I don't know if you can just divide. I'm not. So, uh, Peter.
Uh, I I I have several questions. Uh, one of the things I heard was we're going to use P E spaces. So how, how, what would that look like, I guess? This might be a question for the superintendent. If if we're going to use gymnasiums, et cetera, what happens to physical education if we have desks?
Yeah, I think, Peter, what happened and I I'm I'm thinking there may be some value of going through both presentations. Because I think a lot of your questions will get answered as we go along. But the answer to that, Peter, is that when we were doing a pure square foot analysis, we looked at spaces, we are not going to recommend that we put students in those spaces. But to give a pure, how many square feet does your district have? How many students do you have? As the D S E D E S E asked us to do, that was the the outcome of that data. Now, again, when we make decisions, it's not a math problem here, right? There are a lot of other things to factor in. And when I offer my presentation, you'll have a sense of some of those other things that we factor in. Um, so know that 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 was not anything that Tom was recommending, nor will you find that I will recommend that.
Right, that that was one of my follow-up questions, the number of classrooms that don't conform to D E S E uh specifications.
Yeah, lots. That's why he, that's why he asked us those other spaces.
Well, that that was my concern. And the other question had to do, do we have uh, do we have the furniture already to 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 maintain that physical separation?
You know, that's why he's ordered the desks.
Right, and.
Yeah, Peter, I can actually answer that uh with a very, you know, simple answer is if you take a look at the middle school when that building was constructed and the F F and E package was provided, all of the desks that are in the middle school are double desks, so you can't really socially distance even at three feet with those. Uh, that was a major challenge for our furniture.
Questions. Um. Just a couple more questions. Is it worth building our own storage building to house the tents? I know you mentioned that you're concerned about storaging, store, paying for storage for them, but we could, we could build a storage facility. We have plenty of um property that we could build a a large structure.
We'll see. And what's, what's the other question, Peter?
Uh, the last question, uh, let me put, let me lengthen my arms here. Uh, do we have the staff in place to to put those desks in place? We only have three weeks before technically we open.
Not to worry, it's gonna be, it's gonna be more than that, but yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I I have a whole workforce just ready for the call right now. We had a lot of high school students um that aren't working their typical summer jobs at pools and camps and whatnot. Um, so I've put them, I've held them at bay for a little bit, ready for the shipping date so we can have an assembly line ready to go at each building.
Right.
It will be in place before we need it. I I can guarantee you that if it takes me with a screwdriver all night, so.
It's advanced, we'll be running in the summer. Um, all right, so then in addition, the last couple of weeks, in addition to measuring, you've been looking at some of the health of our buildings. Do you want to talk about that now?
Sure, I can uh go back to sharing my screen.
Thank you.
Okay, is everybody queued up on this district ventilation slide? All right, thank you.
Yep.
So district ventilation, um ventilation in school buildings is a hot button topic now. Um, something that's been on my mind since the whole beginning of the pandemic because school buildings across the country and across the world are usually programmed to A, offer thermal comfort, and B, offer energy savings when you can, right? Um, we have some aging systems and aging infrastructure. Um, that's no surprise to anybody in the district. But first, if we rewind, what we'd be doing this summer, if it was not a pandemic, is we'd be conducting one of our biannual preventive maintenance services on all of the units. So our team typically checks the operation, they change the air filters, they clean the units um and any other tasks, whether it's adjusting belts or motors, um that's associated with that P M um in our work order system. Throughout the year, repairs are conducted as needed uh through a combination of our internal workforce and also contracted services. As I said before, anywhere where we have automated systems, the program logic is is usually based on a mix of environmental comfort and energy conservation. So now, due to the current environment, um, I felt it was a wise idea to bring in a third-party team. Um, so Environmental Health and Engineering Incorporated of Newton. It will actually be visiting our buildings beginning tomorrow. Um, two days and two and a half days of site visits. And then um they'll take the info back and compare it against best practices issued by Ashray, which is a peer group for H V A C uh C D C guidelines, and really look at our ventilation system as it is appropriate to the current pandemic. So I feel this is not only, you know, a good measure to be able to um shake out some of the issues that we have, but it's also being planful and allows us to use our resources in the right way. If I told you that I get fifty sales calls a week with the latest and greatest U V light or um other technology that isn't proven in the marketplace yet, that would be a lowball figure. So rather than chase every new item on the market, uh, I feel if we use um this engineering firm, we'd be getting recommendations. You know, that have a little more backup to them in science to them. So E H N E scope of work is to first do a document review. We provided them with all of the operation and maintenance manuals that are available. Um, all drawings, and as I said, they will be conducting a site inspection and then formulating an action matrix for the district to be able to act upon. And of course, we have a tight timeline. Um, but I am committed, as well as our team members, uh, to implementing any recommendations that we can within the resources that we have um to make sure that all safety items are taken care of before we look at occupying our buildings. I ask that anybody who is viewing this presentation or has an interest in the ventilation and you have specific questions related to ventilation, please feel free to forward them to my email address so I can have the engineers take a look at all of these questions. Um, of course, using this firm. Um, I I feel comfortable with their expertise. They're one of the best in the business. Um, and hope to answer as many questions as I can with this review.
All right, so if you want to stop sharing your screen, that'll be great. Thanks.
Uh, Michelle, may I ask you a question?
Yes.
So our current, you know, H V A C does not filter for viruses, correct?
No, to get, without getting too technical, um, the majority of our classrooms are serviced by unit ventilators. Um, usually the maximum filter medium that you can install in a unit ventilator is around a Merv seven or a Merv eight. To be able to filter out virus particles, you'd be looking at a HEPA type of filter, um, which would not fit in our units, first of all. But it it it's just like anything else. If you, if the medium is too restrictive, then you're not introducing fresh air flow into the classrooms. Um, so that's that balancing act that I'm looking forward to having a third party come in and say, sure, you can install this, but you know, this will do it just as, just as good. Um, I think having a fresh set of eyes may help us.
Well, you, do you think they would recommend like each room have its own independent HEPA filter installed in the corner or something?
That that could possibly be a recommendation. There are schools um that are going out and buying them. Um, that would be a significant investment for the district. Um, if that's one of the recommendations, you'll see me bring it to you folks. Um, but I would rather have an engineering firm put their stamp on that recommendation before I bring it to you folks for a large investment.
Right.
Um, can I ask, Tom, I have a question about something, sorry.
Oregon had her hand up.
Okay, get to it. Uh, Tom, thank you for doing um this work. Um, we greatly appreciate it. Um, I know you said that they're going to be on site this week. Is there, and I know everyone's working on tight timeframes. Did they give you any type of or did you give them tight deadlines um for assessment and all, everything else?
Yeah, I I'm glad you uh brought that question up because I meant to speak to that. Um, I am looking at the end of next week to be able to have a draft report um at least in an executive summary format and have a draft version of that action matrix so we can begin planning around that. Um, knowing that the draft is not going to change significantly from the final report. Um, want documentation to be able to act as fast as we can. So I'm looking at next week of having an actionable document um in my hands.
Great, thank you.
Anna.
Did note that yesterday, we had a H V A C supplier tour the entire district to be able to have the proper sized filters for each unit, um in case those come up as recommendations. Um, so I'm trying to get ahead of it as much as I can as well.
Anna.
Um, something you didn't talk about that I know is a hot topic and I'm concerned about are portable hand washing stations. I feel like in a lot of our buildings, there are limited number of sinks to begin with. And I know that everyone is sanitizer friendly, friend, you know, it was all hot for sanitizer. But there's a lot of kids that don't like sanitizer, and frankly, I'm a little concerned. I think we've all had sanitizer fatigue where you get your hands get cracked and dry and brittle. And there's a certain point where my children don't, won't use sanitizer because it stings like literally. So has, is there any talk about hand washing, which is actually more effective in terms of germ control anyway? Is that part of our plan or not at all?
Um, as of right now, I have not um specified any additional hand washing stations. The majority of our elementary classrooms do have hand washing stations within them.
But in terms of.
Calculations on like cafeterias, but I think at some point it was I need to really see what the design, what the program design is, is what we're walking into to see where the best place to install those would be. And, you know, I'll have to work closely with the building department because if we are installing sinks, we do have to be able to bring them and have them being installed up to current code as well. So I'm not gonna say it's not valuable because I believe a hundred percent that there's been more of a focus on hand sanitizer and instead in lieu of hand washing.
Um, yeah, and I guess I'm just saying, I feel like from a germ pathogen, I mean, I I that's not as effective, and I know a lot of kids will resist sanitizer, especially if it's applied with the frequency that we're talking about. Um, and I know that all the classrooms or a lot of them have sinks. I know that not all those sinks are always functional at times, at least with the ones at Cutler are not always functional. Um, but even under best volume, I guess, but I guess it would depend on the number of kids in the room. If we have, if we truly reduce the number of children, then maybe that would make sense, but I've watched kids try to wash their hands after an art project, and you lose ten minutes easily right there under normal circumstances. So if we're going to ask kids to wash their hands, you know, five, six times a day, that's that's an hour of learning loss while the kids are washing hands. So I just want to make sure we don't forget about hand washing, which has really proven to be the most effective way to present the germs. And then for the outside tent stations, you know, I think of them as like festival sinks or, you know, music, music venue sinks, right? I mean, you can have outdoor stations as well. So I trust your judgment and I love the work you're doing, but I don't want us to abandon hand washing entirely because I think it's actually a better solution, and I'd like us to be creative about it. That's all.
Hundred percent, yeah.
Barry Beth respond to that, and then Peter will ask his question.
Yeah, more, I'm gonna just make a more general comment, and it's been true of our work with our teacher design team as well. As we try to develop a plan, um, that is complex and trying to pull all these puzzles in, puzzle pieces in, the natural place to go is to all the technical questions about how do you do this? How do you do that? And right now, I think what's critical is that we, we get alignment around a conceptual model. Those those technical questions, the people that are close to the work are going to figure those out. We don't have all those answers now, but I I would caution against getting too technical in this and listen to the the overall plan. If you can give us your feedback around that, that's going to be most helpful to our planning in this moment.
Uh, I, to that, I just sort of wonder if.
Wait, Peter was next, and then you can go.
Sorry, quick question. Since we eliminated two-thirds of the maintenance technicians, they, they were the ones who were installing the sinks prior to this with approval of the plumbing inspector. Does this mean we have to hire contractors to?
So to answer that as, as technical as I can, is that anybody that would be installing a plumbing fixture would have to maintain a plumbing license to be able to pull a permit.
Well, yeah.
That's a new fixture and not a repair to an existing fixture, then we would need to contract that out with somebody that holds a plumbing license.
That, that's a change because the plumbing inspector, in my talks with the plumbing inspector, Hamilton Wenham, they said they were okay with maintenance techs doing it and that they would inspect the work. That, that's what the plumbing inspector told me.
All right, David.
So I was just going to say that I'm wondering if we sort of put the cart before the horse here with this presentation, and not hearing everything out on what the actual plan is going to look like. You know, we're talking about facility stuff and addressing all these questions, but we don't even know what our enrollment's going to look like and what our students are gonna, you know, how we're going to be going back to school, where, not to say that we're sort of wasting time here, but maybe wasting some thought process, you know. And feel free, Tom and Mary Beth, since you guys are the ones in the know, and Vinnie, of course, I didn't mean to leave you out, in, in sort of pushing us along so that, you know, we can then get the full picture so we can ask better questions.
Do you have a question?
Nope.
No, I'm trying to, because I'm trying to go through everything, and I, I'm sure once I get the whole picture, then I'll have questions at that point, but.
So that finishes up for Tom. Mary Beth, the, your presentation is not linked on our agenda, so the public can't view it. So that needs to be linked over there.
Yes, in fact, we've been discussing this at teacher design team, and it was finished at approximately 5:30 this evening. So I will be sure that it is linked moving forward, and I'll share my screen so that folks can see it.
Michelle, may I ask one more question of Tom?
Depends if he got away yet or not.
I, I'm just wondering what the, I'm sure it's, it's worth the money, but I'm just wondering how much we're paying for EH&amp;E Inc. to perform their analysis of our district.
Sure, I believe, without having it right in front of me, I want to estimate it nineteen thousand dollars, Peter.
All right.
Well spent, probably long overdue anyway.
I think anything that comes up from the study will be used in the future planning of any of our school buildings, so.
And that's something that could probably, would end up being covered in any COVID relief funds, right? As, as would like the seventy-seven thousand for, possibly for tents.
We can see your screen, Mary Beth.
Great, let me walk you through this, and then I'll be happy to revisit any portion of the presentation that you have a question about when I finish. One of the things I have been starting presentations is just these contextual messages. And this is frustrating for all of us in this environment. Uncertainty is a given and answers are evolving all the time, but many of the answers that people want in this moment have yet to evolve. We know that learning will change with our new reality. So as we're thinking about these models, we heard some concerns from one of the, the members of our community early on. How do we get really good at, at all of these, these models? And particularly the remote and hybrid models that will be very new venues in education. And then finally, what is absolutely essential is that we work together, that everyone is maintaining a posture of flexibility. There's collaboration, and in these challenging times, we continue to be thoughtful and remind ourselves of one another's positive intent in trying to walk through this. As many of you know, we have the teacher design team going on this week. We are actually having an opportunity to learn in a socially-distanced model and, you know, finding out what works well in that and what are some of the challenges that we need to address. Some of our, our work is being done outside. We're thinking through critical priorities. And I, I can't say enough, I know, I know that the committee knows this and the community knows this, but the level of dialogue and engagement and investment that our educators are showing in trying to solve this problem is, is remarkable, and we are truly fortunate to have individuals in our district that care this much and are willing to be thoughtful and reflective around how we move forward. In terms of our, our current thinking and model, this is a disclaimer slide that I'm putting everywhere I can. This is our current up-to-date thinking. Everything could change by tomorrow. So one of the things that I, I thought is really important for the community to understand because it, it can be a little bit confusing, and in our conversations today, we were unpacking this a little bit. What we are looking at to develop is basically a toggle switch that moves, that can move between models, right? So a toggle is a term used to describe the process of switching back and forth between settings or programs. And what the DESE has tasked us with is to build out a way in which you have the ability to toggle between hybrid, in-person, and remote. So one of the questions that we heard at the beginning of the meeting is, you know, if there's a vaccine developed, can, you know, would you, in your all-hybrid, are you committed for the year? And the answer to that is no, because the, you can toggle between these plans based on the conditions that you're facing. Based on the conditions that we are facing right now, the social distancing pieces, the mask pieces, and what, where we are headed right now, and I will speak more to this, is the hybrid model. We believe that right now, under current conditions, the, the most, the, the best course of action would be to start off in a hybrid model, but that, that, that is subject to change, right? You can toggle back and forth. So if the Board of Health and the school district are working collaboratively, collaboratively together, COVID rates miraculously, miraculously fall, and we, we know that safety protocols can be relaxed, we may toggle to all-in-person. Conversely, if the COVID rates rise and Board of Health is indicating that we, we need enhanced safety protocols, restrictions, we may be toggling over to remote. So it's, it's important to keep in mind that instead of thinking about an in-person program or a remote program or a hybrid program, think of it almost as a toggle program where you're moving in and out of different models depending on what the circumstances are indicating is necessary. So one of the, the questions would be, why is a toggle switch set to hybrid for the fall? So in looking at the information that Tom presented to you this evening, bringing all students into an in-person model that is socially-distanced at three feet, we do not believe is an educationally viable environment, and that it also fuels safety concerns with having a lot of, of people in a single room in buildings that are older and socially-distanced only at three feet. Bringing all students into an in-person model that is socially-distanced at six feet is not financially viable for the reasons that we talked about, that if you're, you're spreading out a classroom of twenty-four into twelve and twelve, you need two teachers instead of one. Just again, to show you the pictures that Tom referenced in his presentation, this is the classroom socially-distanced at three feet. You can imagine the challenge that a teacher would have in actually even accessing some of the students. You can imagine what a full day of class would feel like in an environment like this for an extended period of time. When we look at the six-foot physical distancing model, there is more room for the teacher to be able to engage with students. There is more room for students to have more flexible space in their classroom. And so we see this as the, the more viable model. So the current thinking for the, for the fall start is to have the toggle switch on hybrid, right? That, that, that seems to be the best way to go, which means students are spending some of their time in school and then some of their time remotely. So what are some of the considerations for the hybrid structure? First of all, I want, I'm not going to go into detail around this, but I, I want the, the committee and the community to know that a lot of models were considered. There was, and, and unpacked and thought about pros and cons. And that as we thought about this, student-staff safety is a priority, right? We're following, we want to be sure that we're following a higher standard of six-foot social distancing, thinking about mask wearing, we're talking about hand sanitizer, hand sanitizer, hand-washing breaks, cleaning and disinfecting protocols, bus safety and social distancing and quarantine protocols. I just, some of the ways in which we're, we're thinking about those pieces. Another piece of information that has come out since we were together is DESE guidance regarding transportation. And while they provide a number of different bus models with passengers, basically what we know is that we can run buses at about thirty-two percent capacity. That has impact for how many kids we can get to school in a reasonable way. So that is another factor in our consideration. All of these are educational factors that are informing our recommendation, right? Safety, equity, how we deliver instruction, what specific needs around literacy? What are the specific needs around math? What about social-emotional learning? How much, oops, how much instructional planning and prep time is necessary in order to pull off a model that is going to provide our students with a high-quality experience? What about our special education programming? We need to look at operational factors. What, what is the infection mitigation control? What, what about staffing? What's that, what are the issues that are related to that? And there are many. What are the transportation logistics and costs? What about school lunch and logistics? What about the technology? How are we going to handle substitutes? And then what are the community factors informing the recommendation? We have to be mindful of parent feedback and teacher feedback and paying attention to what other regional districts are thinking about so that we can learn from one another in different models. What's the Board of Health have to say? What are the available financial resources that we can count on to be able to fund the school year? When you put all this together, this is the recommendation that I, I feel most comfortable putting in front of you. There are, and the recommendation for the hybrid structure is that we have two days in-person where students will come to school for two days, separated out into Cohort A and Cohort B. Most likely, looking at a Monday, Tuesday for Cohort A and a Thursday, Friday for Cohort B. Wednesday becomes a day for iteration, planning, collaboration, and time for individual family and student communication. And that this model is something that would be consistent across all levels and that siblings will be kept together. And then our students would then spend three days learning remotely. Some addition, additional hybrid details. We are now required to take daily attendance for not only the two in-person days, but we will be taking attendance for the three remote days. There will be a required number of hours of remote work. So it is a very different structure than we saw in the spring, and students will receive grades that are inclusive of their remote work. And in terms of special education and English language learners, we have individualized hybrid learning plans that will maximize services for students. So that would be a conversation between the school and the parents to build out what is, what is their, their individual needs look like in a hybrid environment. We know that some of our most vulnerable students would be in school for all of those days, the Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday. And then for, depending on the profile of our student, they may be in school two full days with the cohort group and then coming in for additional days for additional services. We also know from looking at our parent survey that we have some families that are expressing a strong desire to just stay completely remote. And this is a tricky piece to bear in mind, so I want to be as clear as I can around that. So this means that families are not in a position where they're willing to toggle back and forth and when conditions change. They want to be remote only. We also know that some families are thinking about homeschooling. So what, and this has been a dilemma for many districts across the state in terms of how you staff something like this and how, how you provide those services when you have teachers that are doing in-person learning connected and also providing remote learning connected to that in-person. So what has happened at the state level is they are in the process of finalizing a contract with a vendor to provide a virtual subscription to online courses related to different grade levels. So they, they're contracting with a vendor who has built out grade-level curriculum and at the high school level, typical grade level or typical high school courses of study. The state has negotiated a significantly lower rate around that and that districts can buy subscriptions to families who have made the decision that we want to stay remote and not toggle back and forth. So we would offer that, that program to those families. And in some of our design conversations to date, we would, we have talked about where might we see ways in which we can connect in families that may be on that path? There would be a Hamilton Wenham, oops, sorry for the typo there. A Hamilton, Hamilton Wenham Regional School District staff member who would be connected to this program and be a resource to families. And we would have identified times in the year, if the family decided that we're, we're ready to move from remote learning only into more of a hybrid model, there would be certain dates in the year where we would say, if you'd like to move, you can move during this time. So that, that is where we are right now in terms of thinking and the level of detail the state is looking for right now in terms of our planning. We know that answers will evolve, and to my earlier point, especially around all the multiple procedural questions I know people have. Next week, we will be surveying families. We need to know what their thinking is around the fall in order for us to do much more development in terms of the model. We also need to know what people are thinking about in terms of transportation. And, and one of the things you will hear is that I will ask families, if at all possible, if you can drive your child to school, that's going to be really helpful, particularly given the restrictions we have around transportation. And then just to reiterate, we have the superintendent's chat tomorrow night. And at our design team, we are planning and talking about targeted chats, both for our faculty and for our community members. What I mean by targeted chats, you know, an elementary chat, a middle school chat, led by our administrators and some of the teachers that have been on the design team. So we're, we're looking to start to really reach out to the community and have two-way conversations because answers will be evolving all the time, and as soon as we can get them to people, that we, we believe that that will be helpful. And then again, just kind of finishing up with those key messages, answers are going to evolve. Things are changing, and we're working together. So I will stop there, and I would be happy to respond to any questions the committee may have. Peter?
Okay, Mary Beth, do you want to unshare your screen? It makes it easier for us to see each other. Maybe down at the bottom, maybe?
I get it.
Okay, great. Okay, great. Whoops, I stood up, but I'm not tall enough. Okay, um. Super. All right, so there are twelve Q and As in the Q and A. So Mary Beth, if you want to just quickly, well, maybe you shouldn't be looking at them. I'll quickly look at them um, while we're talking. So let's have each person kind of ask all of their questions in one time period and um, try and limit that to like three, four minutes. Um, Stacy is in the corner of my screen, so she gets to go first.
So um, I understand you're talking about um, doing um, three remotes and two in-person. I'm curious how you're going to support, um, how are the teachers going to support the um, kids who become remote? Because is it going to be the same teacher or are they splitting this class up? Um, and how do the kids who are remote get supported?
Right, that, that is the, the ongoing discuss discussions in our design group this week. We are, um, at each level, there is, there is looking to be a different answer to that. Um, and so that is an answer that will evolve, but that is a critical question that's being unpacked.
And how many models are you looking at? I mean, because we've got the high school, we've got the middle school and the elementary and they're all on different schedules, I would say.
Correct, so what we're, we, one of the things that we try to be mindful of um, in looking at the parent feedback, uh, one of the concerns about the hybrid model was if um, a family would have three stu- students say, and two are in elementary and one is in, one is in middle school and they were all assigned to different parts of the hybrid model. So we tried to say that if your student is going to be in cohort A, um, all of your children would be in that cohort A, Monday, Tuesday piece in order to help um, you plan with the, the challenges organizationally um, that are going to be occurring for all families as this pandemic occurs.
Okay, and the last question, I think, um, is, so what kind of schedule are we looking at um, for the kids? La- um, this last um, spring, we didn't have much learning. There was probably two classes, maybe three at the most that were really taught for each day, uh, uh, four days out of the week. So um, and school was only part-time from about nine to twelve thirty. So I'm just curious because I know there's a lot of concern from parents that I hope we don't go back to that.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think that one of the things that you would, you would hear from teachers as well is, you know, we, you know, the afternoon, we were asked to leave and head home and figure this out, you know, and nobody felt good about what instruction looked like, but there was a reality to the circumstances that occurred and people, you know, pushed through as best they can. Um, what I, while those, those answers are still evolving, Stacy, what I can tell you, um, a little bit of a spoiler alert moving forward. On the, the commissioner on Monday afternoon indicated that he has changed the, the number of school days, um, so in, for students in order to give more time for teachers to do prepping and planning, there's a fairly significant amount of time. We have built in time to this model um, because we know that people are going to have to iterate. When you're, you're making this level of change, um, one of the ways you get a high quality product is you do the best that you can with your first prototype, but then you reflect on that prototype. What can be better? How do we iterate? And so this model builds in time for our teachers to do that um, in order to ensure that the quality of the product across all of those levels um, is maintained. Um, and again, I, I want to reiterate that, that nobody said this was perfect last year. We have nothing to fix, let's just do it the same way. Everybody knew it was less than it could be. Um, and it was a reality to the, the circumstances that we're facing. Um, the state recognizes that because we are not the only district that, that um, ran into issues of trying to develop a program in the environment without a lot of planning, without a lot of time to reflect. And um, the state is being mindful about now trying to provide that for our educators.
Okay, yeah, and I think the high school portion, I guess, concerns me a little bit because like labs, you know, they cannot be done remotely. They have to be done in person. And our um, high school um, scheduling is so tight as it is and how that's, everybody's going to fit into the classes. And I know kids who are seniors who are, are concerned about, are they able to get their classes? Because, you know, they need to finish up and are going to specific schools where they need certain classes, but we've got this schedule we're working on.
Yeah, and one of the things, again, I can tell you, coming up is, you know, we've got our, our teacher design teams working at each level. Um, as, as these answers are evolving, what, what you'll start to see are chats at the high school level. So parents from high school can ask those detailed questions of school administration and, and hopefully we'll be able to have some teachers from the design team on there. So you, you will get specific answers to those. They are being worked on, but at this moment they are evolving. Um, and we should, you could, things will be starting to move relatively quickly. Um, and as soon as possible, we will get those leveled chats out to families so that you can ask more specific questions.
Thank you.
Okay, Peter, and then after Peter, because of the way you are on my screen, it'll be David and then it will be Michelle.
Uh, thank you, Michelle. Uh, you know, recently I, I participated in a statewide meeting uh, with the M A S C regarding school reopening. And there's a few big takeaways. One, I, I, I want to let everybody in our district know that there are hundreds of questions that are difficult to answer, but our superintendent is working on them. She's asking the right question. So I, I, I want to put that out there. Um, and that the other big takeaway is that every district is doing something different. Some are waiting days, weeks, or months to reopen um, based on comfort levels of surveys of parents and teachers. I also re, and Stacy already asked one of the questions I had regarding um, we cohorts, cohort, cohorts and remote learning, that, you know, teachers are going to be in-person, the what, the two days a week, but are they expected to do remote the other two days a week? That's a big ask of our teachers. That's, they're already burdened. One of the questions I had, um, I noticed there's no rubric regarding, uh, there's no rubric established for schools uh, or school committees to evaluate the different options and when it's, when it's time to change plans. I don't, I just, I want to throw that out there. How are we going to decide what's the best option? When should we change?
Yeah. What I, can I answer that real quick? Peter, later, later on, we're going to talk about that the Board of Health has an involvement in this. So that may be what Mary Beth is going to tell you, but.
Yeah, one of the fre- one of the frequently asked questions was, do we have input from other folks besides just the school committee? Do we have epidemiologists? Do we have doctors? Do we have the CDC? Do we have the governors and our administration here? Input on whether, or what school should look like?
You have those on our town boards, so, like, we're very lucky in this community.
Yeah, all right.
Is that it, Peter?
Well, I just would, uh, yeah, I'm, I'm curious to see if we can establish a rubric on um, how do we evaluate, should we be in-person? Should we be hybrid? Should we be, be remote? We, we, we should have some kind of rubric uh, or standards established. I'm not the next, I just know I'm uncomfortable right now sending my daughter to school seeing that the states that are, that are, that have opened too soon in the sunbelt are experiencing record numbers. Ninety thousand people have died since, you know, reopening.
Okay, so, um, all right, so that's something for us to think about. And we might have the Board of Health come to our next meeting. I'll, we'll see. They're not going to meet again until after we make our decision because they're waiting on our decision, but maybe they should be with us, make our decision. Um, but we'll see how that goes. Okay, David?
Uh, yeah, I mean, I would definitely like their, their input on this as well. Um, you know, I, I, I think that one thing, I have three questions and two of them are sort of related and I don't, there's probably not an answer yet. But, you know, I, I think one thing people need to know is now the information's up there that we're probably looking at this hybrid model, which makes arguably the most sense, right? There's nothing that makes it one hundred percent sense. But Leo, what does it like the day look like and what does lunch look like, right? So those are two key issues that I think people want to see, uh, would like to know answers to. Whether or not we actually have that right now, I think that we want to fast track that. The other thing I want to mention, and I definitely want to mention it because now reading one of these questions here, I couldn't disagree with one of the, uh, our participants more and um, and our teachers, right? Um, our teachers, i- if we're sending our students back Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, our teachers aren't socially distancing, right? They're, they're, they're actually seeing the full close load. So, you know, to say why they need more prep time for situations like this, we're actually asking them to risk their lives to come in, right? We can't guarantee their safety. We're doing the best work we can to try and make things as safe for our teachers and our children. But, you know, it, this is a big ask. And, and, you know, to say that we're, we're not holding them accountable is absolutely ridiculous. But the, you know, I, I, I want to sort of know where, you know, where our teachers stand on this and how they feel and how, you know, if, if they're not on board and feeling safe, if this is all moved, this whole discussion is moved because we're going to be losing teachers because why would they want to come in? You know, and, 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 and if we, when we can't guarantee their safety or actually get support for all the hard work they're doing, because they're doing the real work. So those are, those are the points I wanted to, I wanted to make and see, you know, so to see where we are in those discussions.
Do you want to add, Mary Beth, because I know you had discussions with John today, so.
Yeah, I mean, I ca- so a couple of things. First of all, David, thank you for that, that piece around sooner rather than later getting information about what lunch looks like, if that's something that we're hearing a lot from. Um, I, I couldn't agree more that, that uh, both, both our teachers and our students need to feel safe when they enter into the classroom. I, I can tell you that I know there's a lot of anxiety from teachers. And even within the design team, there are some teachers who feel that we should not come back. We should just stay, stay remote, even within a larger group. Um, I, I am feeling that we are working well and collaboratively with, with the union. I'd like to put a shout out to John Koch, who is, is working with us to try to figure out how we create environments that feel safe to students. We are negotiating a set of safety protocols that um, are, are designed to address the concerns that teachers have um, uh, and feeling safe in the classroom. And so there's, there's lots of dialogue related to that. Um, so I, I, I agree that it's critical that we, we take seriously the, the level of concerns that people have about safety in these environments and we work to address those levels of concern. I think the other thing that Michelle had indicated earlier is that we're working really closely with the Board of Health, right? So in terms of these, is this safe? Is this appropriate? You know, we're, we're educators, right? So we need to call in the, the medical experts and we happen to have many strong experts in this field. Um, when we're doing a second round of designing and working next week, we'll have our lead nurse in, and we, we may have other members of the Board of Health in. So we, we are calling on them and asking them to work in partnership with us um, to be able to determine, are our protocols safe? Um, and, you know, just to pop back a little bit, like that start-stop question that you raised, Peter, that's, that is, that I would suggest strongly is going to come to guidance from the Board of Health as they let us know, conditions are shifting, you need to move here, you need to move there. But I, I think the safety issue is real. Um, I think we have to honor that in our community and be planning in a way that respects those worries that are out there.
Michelle Horgan, and then after Michelle Horgan is Dana.
I don't want to get into the weeds, but I just would like you to, and I'm sure you already have, um, working with the teachers and the administrators, trying to keep the remote days as consistent as the in-person days and especially with the younger grades. And I know there's a benefit to asynchronous learning and synchronous learning, but for the kids to have the set schedule. And that's, you know, I'm sure you guys have already thought that through, but that would help, be helpful.
People are thinking deeply about that. Um, and, and also thinking about what are the opportunities that exist in this moment um, when we think about remote, remote learning? Um, so not only structure predictability, you know, what, what pa- what do parents need in terms of support? What kinds of structures do kids need? And then what are, what are the new potential opportunities if students are, are learning in that kind of environment? So there's, there's been some deep and thoughtful conversations about that. Um, and so that model, you know, continues to be under discussion. Um, but part of the reason why there's not a quick answer is a, a well-thought-out answer takes some processing. Um, and I think it's well worth the time to do that.
Um, okay, great. And my second question is, you mentioned that the state is looking to purchase um, a platform for remote families. Um, in Whistling Dixie, any thoughts or, or have you heard anything about state or federal funding for that? Or is it all on the district shoulders?
One of the things that is unfolding here and as answers evolve, right? We're, we're, we're looking at the financial situation. Um, we do know that there's some new monies coming from the governor. Um, if people are following the, the news at the federal level, looking, it looks very likely that there may be additional dollars coming to schools. Um, so we're, we are looking at all the potential sources of revenue and we will be coming back to you in the near future about what we think those are. And the, and we're paying attention to all the new costs that, that might occur. Um, and we, the intent here is to try to keep those two things in balance. Um, it, so what I would say is I know that we're going to see some new revenue and we're going to see new costs. And the, what we're trying to do right now is to make sure that as, to the extent possible, those two are balancing themselves out. And if there is any change to that, um, we will need to come to you and let you know. But that, that is what we are working on at this moment.
Okay, thank you.
Dana, I'm going to steal just a quick second here. Uh, so one of the questions in the Q and A was, um, if you go remote and you go into the subscription, who pays? We should just clarify, the school district pays. You're not going to pay for that. And then the other part is, we're talking about new revenue. It's not technically revenue, it's really grant funds when they come from those places. So it, it, it's not that we're spending money we said we wouldn't spend. It's that we've found new money that is being a grant, so.
I can give it a specific example, Michelle, correct? So they, what the, the, the taxpayers voted on, we're, we're, we're working to be sure that we, we honor that, right? Um, one source of revenue, there is a, a governor's grant that is giving two hundred and twenty-five dollars per student, right? So that is going to um, bring in about four hundred thousand to our district. Now, in the short time period, you've heard um, expenses probably equaling something close to that. So things are, again, evolving. Um, costs come rapidly. And at this moment, it does seem like we are, we may be getting some additional revenue in. We are all anxious to hear what is happening at the federal level. Um, so it's too early to really give you a thorough analysis on that. But I can tell you that is the way in which we are trying to move forward to solve this is to keep those revenue and expenses in alignment.
Sorry about that, Dana, go ahead.
Um, so, Mary Beth, my question was, um, well, Michelle asked, Michelle Horgan asked part of it, but I, um, in addition to that remote, so you're saying the families who, it's just a clarification. The families who opt to say, we are not coming back to this hybrid model, we need to be fully remote. You're saying that the state is going to determine this vendor. So those families that vendor is not, it's going to be, I know you don't know what, but it's not going to be our teachers teaching those students remotely.
Correct, so, and one of the things you should know, there are a number of remote options that you can look at. What I can tell you that most districts are finding and is certainly true in this, this district, we are not staffed to be able to run two in-person sessions each week. Um, then the, the accompanying three remote Then the, the accompanying three remote days that go along with those two sessions and then run a totally separate remote program. We are simply not staffed for that. So, but one of the things that, that's important is that we would have a staff member that would, you know, and exactly what that would look like, we don't know yet. But is there a teacher on call? But there would be somebody in the Hamilton Wentworth Regional School District that those parents could reach out to if they were having a challenge with the program, that type of thing. And, and we're, and there's been conversations in the teacher design team about how do we still make sure that as we're, we're doing this work and keeping connections and building relationships? How do we think about that group and are there ways to tie them in to some of the work that we might be doing? So those, those are where the conversations are right now. Did that answer your question Dana?
Yeah, I mean, mine was really just a clarification to make sure I understood that. And then the second part of it is if, I really liked the toggle switch, that was very helpful for me. And so if the district needs at some point during the year to toggle to fully remote, obviously at that point, our teachers, the Hamilton Wentworth teachers would be doing that.
And that, that's the piece that it's important for you as a, a committee to understand, the community to understand. Because there, there could be actually two full remote models running at the same time.
That was.
Group of families that say, you know, regardless of what you decide, I'm not interested in toggling back and forth. I know I want my kids remote. That's one plan, right? But the toggle group could also be fully remote in different times. And, and one of the, the values of the, the hybrid model with the cohort groups that are, that has been considered is that in that model, we are already building out three full days of remote work and paying attention to that, the quality of that work. So if we need to toggle to remote, we, we now are just shifting two of the days. That makes that, that shifting back and forth a little bit more manageable.
And, and, and then there is an opportunity periodically, like specific dates or times that hypothetically a person lets, a person who was remote, the world could change and they could make at a regular interval, whatever the, that they would know that there might be a time that they could rejoin if they.
Right, right. And the, the only reason why that restriction is on there is that this is going to very much be a numbers game in terms of how many students you have, where, and how many teachers you have and where you deploy them. And so to have massive shifts from day to day or without some kind of planning could be really disruptive to everybody. But we do know that, that families may change their mind and we want to have a pathway for them to make a change if they choose to do that.
Okay, Anna, did you have questions? And then I'm going to run through some of the stuff in the Q and A. Because.
Uh, yeah, I do.
Have any good questions, but there's a few good ones there.
Yeah, there are some good ones there. I do have some other ones though, that are not there. So I think there is a lot of, of concern about the quality of support for those remote days. To me, that seems like the central question is if the teachers are busy teaching on two and the kids are remote, there was already dissatisfaction with the level of support provided in the spring. Even though, and I'll use my family as an example, we had tremendous support from our teachers. They seemed like they were very busy, but a lot of people did not have that experience. So I think high level concern that I'm seeing and hearing from so many people is that those remote days have to have some support. And honestly, I'm not, without going back to the proverbial problem of doubling our teacher staff, I don't see how our teachers can do two things at one time.
Yeah, Anna, I can, I can speak to that and we, we agree, you know, in the conversations that that's been something that we've been really mindful of. But we have a lot of teaching staff outside of classroom teachers. Depending on how many kids go remote, may we be able to tighten up some of the sections? So the, the general thinking right now, but it is absolutely evolving, is that there would be different teachers assigned to be facilitating work during those remote days. And again, those Wednesdays are going to help make those connections between them. If you think of people, and this is, this is absolutely not any type of definitive plan, but I would use example like media technology specialists, some of our special subject teachers. How, how might we do that in terms of having another cohort of teachers? Or you know, is there a grade level person that's paying attention? All different kinds of opportunities, those are the brainstorms we're throwing out and trying.
But there's, but there's a general acknowledgement that on the days kids are remote, they still need somebody to work with them. And I would say that's especially true with kids who have special needs, that when you take that away. So that was one question. I have two kind of curvally questions that I haven't heard anybody else ask. What if parents want their children to be in different cohorts? So that if, for example, you have three kids at home, that is really hard to manage, all of them remote at the same time. But say two of them went to school and then you have one. Can parents choose to not have their kids in the same cohort?
Yeah, no, it, it's a great question, Anna. And I, I think that the, the best answer I can offer is at this time is it's going to be a balance of two things, right? We have 1,800 plus students in this district and making personal and individual plans for each student and who's going to be where at what day could become an overwhelming and undoable task.
Okay.
And sometimes there are ways in which a family could ask for that and it may not be possible. And other times, you know what, I think we can figure out how to do that. So it's, I would say that you're not going to see something that's really rigid. But there will also need to be that understanding and the willingness to be flexible if we're not able to accommodate something like that.
Okay. And again, I'm especially thinking of students who need more support, who, you know, kids who typically would have more in-classroom support when they're home, not only are parents being asked to sort of homeschool and help manage their remote, now they're being asked to do that with students who have more intense needs. So I can't imagine a scenario where a teacher said, a parent says, if I'm going to be home and I, I want to separate my kids, and that actually might be the best outcome. But I hear your point about logistics. I just wanted to throw it out there as something that I've heard and I thought about. I also very much echo what Dana said about the flavors of remote, that people need to understand there is kind of off the shelf remote, that's not really us with a little bit of supervision. There is our own remote plan on the three days. And then again, just throwing it out there, I don't expect you to have an answer. And I, I know I don't, I've read those D E requirements about quarantining protocols and when and if this and how many feed and number of hours off. And I think we've all read them and they're ridiculous. But the third flavor of remote I see is what if a child goes fully remote on our plan, but only for a quarantine period? So instead of five, two, three days remote with our teacher plan, now they're five days remote for say two weeks straight. That's different than the off the shelf remote or the three day a week remote. And I feel like, I don't, I don't, I know you won't have it in a sit down, but I just think parents should be aware that there is a version of remote that is a quarantine driven one, that might be somewhat individualized to the child based on exposure protocol. So I just, I don't know if you want to say anything to that, I just wanted to throw that, say that up.
That's, that's true, right? And, and even now as we have situations where children may need to be out for periods of time, right? We figure that piece out. So I think that that would be an individual response to an individual situation.
Okay. And then the last one kind of gets back to something Peter was talking about. I actually feel rather strongly that in our state, because we have such good access to medical information and our state has been proactive and our boards of health have been proactive. I feel like, to me, it seems obvious that in the same way Desi is telling us now in a prescriptive way, full in-person hybrid, full remote, at some point, based on health information, I personally don't think that, I, I would not encourage us to spend time reinventing the wheel. I think if the state decides it is not safe for people to be in school at all, I don't think that's coming from us. I think that's coming from the state, the governor, the Board of Health, someone higher in the food chain. But I think the opposite is true. If the data improves or a vaccine comes around, at some point, Desi is going to say, you know what? This remote option is not what we want to do for school anymore. So I, I guess I just want to say, I, I wouldn't want us to spend too much time on that ourselves. I would absolutely defer that to our medical experts in this community. And there are a great number of amazing ones and we're very lucky that we live in the state of Massachusetts. I just can't say that strongly enough that we have access to that information. So, and I feel like that really is the answer. And at some point, maybe this is a question for, maybe this is a little bit of an eternal question or maybe it's a Desi question. But there are always going to be pair, you know, everyone's risk thresholds are going to be present. So I guess at some point, I would love to see guidance from the state about those families that really want to stay remote despite what the state says. And at that point, are they actually choosing to homeschool as opposed? So I guess this is version four of remote, which is let's say the state says everyone goes back. We think it's safe. We, the state, we, the state, we, the district say it's safe and we're switching back. There may still be families that say, we don't agree, we want to stay remote. And at what point does the state say, okay, well, you're actually not choosing a publicly funded remote program? You're choosing to homeschool your kids. And I'd be really curious to know where that policy line comes into play at some point. You know, maybe that's once in, in the future. But I would wonder at what point from an expense point of view, if we have parents continuing to opt out after we've passed that point, at what point are they actually just choosing to homeschool their kids?
Yeah, no, it's a great question. And you know, right now, we're just trying to stay, you know, one step ahead of tomorrow. But I think that that's something that we can unpack as hopefully we start to see improvement in, in the COVID rates that are, that are happening in the country. One of the, one of the things that I would offer to the committee and also to the community, I know that there are families that have been thinking about kind of having learning pods. That's something that I've, I've heard as a discussion. I would encourage those families to consider signing up for the remote piece for, for a couple of reasons. One is that there would be curriculum that would be built for them. Two, they would be, they would be able to maintain a connection to the public schools so that their kids can be connected. From a purely financial model, when a family decides to homeschool, that pupil is no longer counted in our chapter 70 reimbursement. So if, if they are part of the remote program, they continue to be counted in our student count. If they, they decide to kind of declare as homeschooling, we lose those funds. And then finally, the homeschooling process requires that families create a full plan for each child and that plan is given to the district and then approved by the district. So having this remote option at this moment feels like kind of a real win-win for both, both the district and for the families. So just, just to add a little bit more detail to that.
Yeah, well, that's, that's why I asked the question, because I know there's a financial consideration that we as the fiduciaries for the districts will probably be somewhat paying attention to. I just don't want to get to the point where, depending on what the numbers are, you know, if we have, if we're continuing to carry a significant financial burden past the point, at some point, someone has to sort of, I guess, pull, not really pull the plug, but there has to be a way to delineate, when are we on a state, a state sponsored plan versus a homeschool plan? But I think as parents are considering all these options, I think it's really important for parents to recognize that there will come a point where that goes away, I guess, is what I want to say. And that parents should be mindful of that when in, entering into these ideas, that that's not a forever plan. And you can't forever choose to stay remote if your risk threshold is different. I'm not judging anyone's preference one way or the other. I, I have my own strong feelings about different parts of that. But from a financial point of view, I think it's a consideration for families as they're thinking about it.
All right. So one thing you did not address tonight, Mary Beth, is preschool. So that's come up a few times. Do we anticipate having peers at the preschool this year?
We, we are anticipating having peers, but that has been a question because of the number of students that we feel we can safely and appropriately have in a pre-K. So we will have pre-K for next year. We are anticipating having peers, but we are looking closely at numbers to see if we need to potentially shift the model at all for those people that have been accepted into the pre-K program. I will share at this point, if you have not been accepted into the pre-K program, it is unlikely that there will be space for additional students.
Also, it's come up several times, the thing we talked about, that it seems like the kindergarten parents are not on the email list. So I know you're working on that. So I just want to honor that people have put that in there. It's something that came to our attention very recently and we're working on it. There's questions about testing as far as is there a requirement to have your student tested for COVID? Will we be testing community wide?
Yeah, it's a great question and one that's actually being processed at the state level as to what this would look like in, in different districts. So this is more at this current moment, a statewide conversation than an individual district conversation. And again, answers are evolving.
Yeah. And so when we're looking at these A B schedules and cohort schedules, there's several questions about, are we thinking about changing, are, are any of those half days? Are we thinking about changing the time that school starts? Recognizing, I know that that's in the contract, so. And you may not be able to answer that, but can families anticipate that school will start and end around the same time? Or should we say maybe not? Same time of day, same time of day?
Yeah, I think that, you know, that right now what we're looking at is the same time of day. Can you see little tweaks in, in different places? Yes, could it, you know, and I do not say, oh, this is going to happen, but could it move a half an hour one way or another? Say, it, it could, depending on all the logistical pieces we're trying to work out. We're working, as again, I, I really have so appreciated walking into a situation where educators, administrations, school committee, as we're working our way through this, it has been a collaborative conversation. So we're, we're having these conversations with the union. John actually stopped by today as we were talking and we were raising these questions and problem solving together. And I think with, with that kind of culture and work together, we're, we're going to sort this out. The, the, and, and, but again, the answer to the question about will it be the exact same school hours? You could see small tweaks either at the beginning or the end. But we are, we are anticipating it, it being like a, a full day experience.
And then there, there's questions around IEP services and 504s, but specifically, if you're a student that has a health concern, how will that be addressed that you would get your services if you can't even come into the building?
Yeah, so one of the things that I would share with families is that each, when we are looking at students on IEPs and 504s, those become really individual conversations and individual plans. So that's going to be something that you're going to be working out with your team. And we will, when I talked about those targeted chats, one of the targeted chats will be around special education so that families can, can get more details here in that, in that setting than in a, a broader setting. Again, many of those answers are evolving, but for, I think the big picture answer right now is that those are individual decisions for individual students. And in, in both a remote and a hybrid model, plans are identified for, for each student.
And then do you want to give a plug for, if you still have questions, where you can maybe be tomorrow?
We'll, we'll be doing a superintendent's chat again tomorrow evening from seven to eight P M. Answering as many questions as I possibly can during that time period and then collecting the questions. We will be working on F A Q docs. We know there's a lot of questions out there. The school committee actually went through and took all the parent responses from the survey, came up with five, the five most common questions in each category. We gave that to our teacher design team, so they're aware of that. But know that people have specific procedural questions and we know that you're going to need an F A Q doc and we're working on it.
Super. Okay, so last chance, Peter. You get one question, make it good.
You tasked us with looking at those responses. I read through 784 of them. Some people wrote doctoral dissertations. And I boiled, boiled it down to 20 questions. Do, is that, are we going over those questions tonight? Because. Because you and Anna have already brought up a few of them.
No, if you just provide those to Mary Beth.
I did.
Yeah, so then she's working on getting the answers and then it'll be posted online probably, well, we'll talk about what's going to happen with the calendar in a little bit and it'll probably be posted sometime around that.
Okay. I'm sorry, I could not boil it down to five.
I know. Peter, I was reading some of the others. I was like, oh my gosh, there's like so many questions here, like, and I just got to get this off the chest, like, is there going to be MCAS this year? I'm like, are you freaking kidding me? Like, let's ask if there's going to be school first? And then we'll worry about it. It's going to be MCAS like in the fall. And I get it. My kid, my kid didn't take the MCAS for his graduation requirement, so it's a big deal, but it's not a big deal today. So we will get to that when we can. And it's not our decision anyway. So great. So let's talk about it next week.
All right, great. I just wanted to make sure you tasked us with looking at those responses coming up before they ask questions.
So next week, leadership team is going to be meeting. So Mary Beth would like for us to participate in that. If we participate as a quorum, then it's a meeting and we have to be able to provide full access somehow. So, Mary Beth, what do you want to do?
What, what I would recommend at this time, given the pace that we're currently on, all focuses on teacher design team right now. We have not yet built out the, the agenda for next week, is that I, I can offer to the committee, different times would be valuable to have school committee input and have people pop in to be able to provide that input. I think trying to have a, a public meeting in the midst of all that planning and just trying to get a sense of the temperature of the group, that, that could be really cumbersome. But at the same time, it would be helpful if school committee members could stop in at different points of the day and that we, I can let you know when those times might be in order to, to give us your insight and, and questions that you're hearing from the community, is this going to be or not? So I would, I would, I would steer away from trying to have a, a published meeting during that time. But I think that there are ways in which the committee can stop by and participate if they can find a period of time during both or either of those days.
I'm going to ask you to get an opinion from the attorney general that says that or from our lawyer. Okay. That was not their recommendation for us, so.
Yeah, I was going to say having done.
Recommend that come in small groups that would.
Well, I actually, I actually think having just done, Dana and I were such good doobies. We did the open meeting law training last night and even without a quorum, I would be concerned that you're essentially asking us for private deliberation short of a quorum outside of a public forum. There's a lot of words that end with orum in that sentence, but, I mean, I would love to participate and offer my insight, but I am sensitive to what Michelle just said is the sub-quorum, private deliberation seems a little bit to skirt that, the purpose of that law. If, for example, the three of us are in a room and we're talking about something and essentially levying ad hoc support to a very deliberative process? And then the committee goes away with that? I mean, then the, the leadership team goes away with that? Wouldn't we have effectively, essentially as a small number of people, let's say just Peter and I pop in and we offer our opinion and then that steers the direction? Have we not provided deliberative, purposeful advice in a private setting, which would seem to be a violation of open meeting law?
Yeah, not until I and Dana show up and provide input, then all, then four of us have.
So are we sure about the quorum? Are we sure though?
Is there, is there any?
That's what they told me today. That's what they told me today. They, they highly recommended we not come in small groups.
Okay, that's, that, one of the, one of the things I want to be sure is that the committee is feeling connected to this work. You're our ears to the ground about what, what people are, are saying and worried about and that kind of thing. So there was some value in, in just having individual feedback from committee members around, you know, this is what we're hearing, you know, have you thought about this? I'm not sure this is gonna, or this might be an issue. But I appreciate if the committee feels that that would not, that that raises some open meeting laws and we can work around.
I mean, we could do, like, if you're in the library, we could televise it, you know, just have the camera wide and it could be televised if we had time.
But, but does Mary Beth and her leadership team actually, I mean, you're doing other public forums, like, I, I guess there's a certain point, I'm not sure if you want that. I can see that process being messy.
You don't need to, you don't need to televise it, right? If, if we.
We do. We need to televise it because we're not going to allow the public to come.
Yeah, and I think, you know, I, I hope that people can understand the, the logistics, just trying to get the right people in the room and getting agendas together to try to pull off something like that, I, I think would, would not make sense and I do not think is doable. So I completely appreciate if it's the wisdom of the committee.
Naomi to say something different, then we can be protected by our lawyer?
Well, and I would also say the real question to me is, is it quorum? Is it?
Sorry, let Dana go.
Okay.
I, because I am very new to this, so I have a question. Is there a way for us as the school committee to designate a person or a subcommittee or a couple of people to go to this meeting?
No, but Mary Beth could do that.
Okay. Well, then thank you for rephrasing my question. Is there a way that Mary Beth could, you know, to, to designate a specific person who's there to observe or there to? It's a legitimate question. I don't know the answer.
She can create her own advisory group as long as it doesn't include a quorum of the school committee.
Yeah, well, it should then be a subcommittee of the school committee though. So it actually.
Not if Mary Beth picks them. If we pick them.
But what's, what's the difference though?
It would still be a subcommittee. We would have to vote, we would have to vote on it and, and post the meeting.
Not if Mary Beth picks them. If we are no input. I don't know. I believe, I believe that Mary Beth can make advisory committees.
I think in the interest of time, I think this, I agree with Michelle, this is.
Way in. And I get it, Mary Beth, I totally get it. You don't want to be hung out to dry and find out like that there's something that you needed to know. I get it. And we're happy to participate if we can.
Well, so I think in the interest of time, since I think that, I know there's still more on the agenda, this sounds very much like a legal question. And to me, the question is, is it about, as long as we're below a quorum, is it okay? That's a high level question. Question two is to David's point, if it's a designated subcommittee, do we make it? Does Mary Beth make it? Does it matter? And then what are the implications? Because I agree, I very much want to participate and offer feedback, but I think maybe if we could just have Naomi decide and I will follow, I would love to participate, Mary Beth, if it is legal for us to do so.
Okay, let me, let me get some additional legal guidance on that.
All right. So now we're on to the, so we had some cuts in order to make our budget. Part of that was we eliminated three curriculum leaders, not curriculum leaders, but they were curriculum administrators really. And curriculum work still needs to happen. Those people coordinate things for us. And so Mary Beth had made a sort of generic idea about having a teacher leader sort of take on that role for a year. So now we have a description that we could approve. Let's talk about that a little bit, Mary Beth, maybe cost or whatever.
Sure. So this is a, a model that I have used in the past, teacher on special assignment. When you have a, an intensive project or a scope of work that is critical to get done, that really can benefit through, for, through additional teacher voice to pull a teacher out of a classroom for a year and have them focus on that work with the idea that then they would return to the afterwards. We know that we lost a tremendous amount of capacity at the elementary level. District, District Y, we lost a curriculum coordinator, but then both of the elementary people that were hoping to coordinate at the elementary level were also removed. I have some very significant concerns about pulling together a, a high quality coordinated program in the absence of, of any support related to curriculum and instruction. So this is a job description that would pull a teacher out of the classroom who would be working very closely with the elementary principals. And that person would be helping to coordinate a number of things that you see on that job description and, and help and be able to work in classrooms, supporting teachers in taking on a variety of tasks as the need, specific needs unfold.
So is it the cost then to us for, she's going to get an, this person getting, again, increase, plus we'd have to have a replacement?
We would have to have a replacement. So one of the things that I said earlier is that there are a lot of revenue, not revenue, but sources of funding that we believe will be available. We're also closing out, the auditors are in, so we are closing out fiscal year 20 to see where we land there. Right now that is looking favorable. We know that we've got additional money coming in from the governor and is likely that we will have additional money coming from the feds. I, I would not bring this to you if I did not have a high degree of confidence that we will be able to cover it through one of those sources.
I'm just concerned about our, the funds. I mean, with COVID and all the things that we have to bring into the school and we've had, we had to make cuts this last, you know, for the budget going forward. I'm just concerned where this money's coming from and then if we need extra money for things. And I guess my biggest concern is, what I'm seeing is at the high school, you know, where does that stand? Is it going to be all remote and is there going to be teaching? Because I think that's going to be the most affected is the high school level this coming semester.
The high school level has the curriculum directors, that's why.
Yeah, that, that. No, I'm talking funding wise, not the curriculum. I'm talking funding and there might be more cuts at the high school. And I feel like our high school students are going to be affected by all this stuff going on.
Why would there be more cuts at the high school? What do you mean by that?
That's usually, we're going to need more money to figure out how to do this plan. And it seems that high school gets the most cuts. It's always seems to be the first that happens. Not at elementary, it seems to be at the high school.
I would say that I'm not, not anticipating that we would see any cuts. If anything, we will need to do additions to staff. But again, I, what I said at the outset, and this is still, there's a lot of moving pieces right now. I would not, I am working very, very hard, working with Vinnie to be sure that if we, we have found a need that needs to be added to the budget, we know where that's going to come without going outside of the budget that was voted on by the voters. And there are, it does appear that we will have monies finishing, finishing up fiscal year 20 due to the fact that we were shut down for an extensive period of time. Auditors are in, we want to be sure that, that that money is there before we, we finalize anything around that. We know that there is $400,000 from the, the money that the governor has announced, $225 per student. And we know that there, we don't know, but every signal that is coming through is that there will be some substantial money coming through at the federal level. That is what is being debated in, in Washington right now. So given all of those pieces, we are, we are also talking and working with the towns that have some COVID money and exploring if there may be some ways that we can get funding there. We have applied for a, a technology grant to the state. But I would share with you that at this moment, and having watched what the spring was like, this, I'm sure feels like a, a world change, but my, my, the least of my worries right now is that the funding piece. I am far more concerned about ensuring that we have the capacity that we need to deliver a quality experience for our students. And there are some significant holes that we are trying to fill in order for that to happen.
So, Mary, can I, can I sort of respond to what you said and what Stacy said?
It needs a good question.
It asks you a question?
Yeah, we're, we're keeping these things to like two hours.
So, so it sounds to me then what this, it sounds to me, okay, I prefer, it's like playing Jeopardy, frame it as a question. Mary Beth, would you say that this is a financially creative and perhaps opportunistic funding mechanism, since we have additional funding coming in, to essentially help offset the loss of the curriculum leaders at the elementary level, which is where they were cut? This is a clever way of sorts to recover that position that was somewhat crucial in a time of need in arguably the place in the district, there's the most potential for variation because we have three different elementary schools. And it was my observation experience in the spring that that was the, the curriculum gets most spread, that not all the second grades did the same thing. And a position like this could be helpful. So is, is this a, is this a smart way to try to replace a position that we were forced to cut?
I think that, that, that's the attempt here. And part of what I, I'm mindful of is what I would call one-time money, right? That the solutions that I am, that you will probably be seeing me bring to you, I'm looking to say, okay, this is money that we can put in the budget this year where we have additional sources of funds, but it's not something that's being added to the operational budget. If, if that is, if there's a circumstance that may come up like that, then that's going to be a different level of conversation about how I, I think we could fund it. But solutions that we're looking for right now, we, we think we will have access to a fair amount of one-time monies. So things like tents, things like one-year teacher on special assignment, that, that, that's designed to get us through this crisis, this unusual year, and to not end up with a lot of additional costs in an operational budget moving forward.
I think it's really important to say that we're not trying to replace the position, but we're trying to get the work that needs to be done, done.
Right.
Two very different.
Yeah.
Dana, do you want to make a motion and then if there's any debate, we can have the debate?
I move that the Hamilton County Regional School District approve the position for 2020, 2020, 2021 elementary teacher on special assignment.
Seconded.
Seconded by Anna. All right, so does anybody want to have anything to say about it? I have an opinion, Stacy.
I'm concerned where we're, are we taking these funds from E and D to use? Where are these one-time funds coming from? I'm still confused how we're getting some of this money because of what, you know, I've been seeing some of what's going around, around through just, you know, legislation, you know, so I'm confused where this money's coming from.
Sure. So, and this is, this will be at, at some point a larger presentation to the, the committee. There are just so many moving parts right now and I'd like to get through the audit before we, we have a, a formal conversation about this. But let me give you some examples of, of this. So the governor released funds, again, of $225 per pupil. With our pupil count, that's about $400,000 as part of COVID response money. That was, that probably happened two, two and a half weeks ago. We have a, again, we are looking at a potential surplus, finishing out fiscal year 20 that, that could be quite significant. But again, we want to have the auditors through. That, that money is, is money that is now a surplus money that we could use to prepay tuitions and out of district and free up other room in the budget. And the budget, that is an operational budget. There, there are monies and I don't know yet if the, the towns would be willing to support, support us with this. We're, we're in conversations right now, but they, they are sitting on funds that can only be used in relation to very specific COVID expenses. So many, many things that we are, we are currently. So many, many things that we are, we are currently spending money on. I would say the, the desk would be an example that we may be able to have a conversation with the town around covering, covering that. We have applied for, I do not know if we'll receive it, a, um, grant funds for technology that was, that was put out at the state level. And then, interestingly, I was on a call with the commissioner today talking about the release of federal funds, and, and he seemed to think that that may be a significant amount of money for districts. And right now, I, what I will, will tell the, the committee and the community, given COVID, given the transition issues, given the, the reduct, the pulling out 22 positions in the budget, when all those things are coming together, we are running hot. And there are some things that need to be taken care of pretty quickly. And I am trying to come up with solutions that make sense. And at the same time ensure that we, we maintain the, the commitment we made to the communities around holding to what has been voted on. We are actually in a very, in a, I think, a pretty solid position compared to many communities, because we already took the 20% reduction out of our budget. So if, and that has not happened yet. If it happens, we're covered. So, you know, having, like I said, sat through the, the painful deliberations about the budget in the spring, we, we find ourselves right now in an interesting turn of events, given all of this, that we are sitting in a fairly, fairly solid financial situation, which is going to enable us to make moves that need to be made quickly in order to set us up for the fall, because there are a lot of things that need to get taken care of right now. And that's part of what we're trying to sort out. And trying as much as possible to be thinking about what are the solutions that are one-time money that can, that we know that we have funding sources for. So.
So sorry, Peter, go ahead. I have a comment.
Peter, you're on mute. If you just wanna unmute yourself, we appreciate that you're on mute when we're, you're not talking though.
Anna, did you wanna finish?
No, you could go first. I'll come back.
No, I, I guess I'm trying to understand the logic. So this person would fill the role of a, of a coordinator who is laid off?
Uh, no, you know, right now, we know that when those positions were taken out of the budget, there was work that those people were doing that was critical. You know, there are other models in terms of how that work can get done. And, and so one of the models are, you know, are to have teacher leaders doing some of this work. We know that particularly in this COVID crisis, with all the changes that are occurring, with the total elimination of any of that support at the elementary level. Again, the, the middle school, high school has curriculum coordinators for all kinds of areas. The elementary curriculum coordination was wiped out. That being able to have somebody that would be a skilled teacher, that would be respected by their colleagues, that can be pitching in, helping to coordinate some of these efforts, that puts us in a better position to be able to serve our, our elementary students well. And that, that things fall through the cracks when we, when we're missing any kind of support in that area.
And can any of the laid-off staff be brought back to fill this role? I mean, they might hold multiple certifications. I hope five.
Peter, one thing you're gonna want here is a very senior teacher, and most of our staff that was laid off were junior staff. However, if they had the right spots.
They might come back.
Can I?
Entry school teacher and that senior teacher would fill this role, I guess.
Be a switcheroo there, yes.
Can I, so the comment I was gonna make is that I really like the creative thinking, Mary Beth, about one-time money. We are in a one-time, God help us, situation. So I like the idea that we're not making a permanent commitment to a position or a staff. We're simply saying this is a responsive, nimble, creative use of funds to capitalize on funding. The other thing I like about it, and David put it really well, it's not really about a position because it's the work. The work needs to get done this year, and we need to find a way to do it, and you've identified a way to do it. But now that I'm thinking about it more, sort of holistically, I like the idea that it's a classroom teacher. When you think about the students and the parents is toggling, the teachers are doing the same. And if it's already a veteran classroom teacher on assignment in this position, depending on what happens vis-à-vis COVID, that person can shift back, they could move here, they could maybe be support. Maybe they help provide some of that remote flexibility support. We talked about the classroom teacher being there. I mean, if we're talking about addressing the needs this year of our district, someone who can really wear a lot of hats seems really smart. And if it's a veteran classroom teacher, they can, they could do that.
Well, is there, is there agreement on this? I feel like we're all talking about that we support it, and it would be better if we could just vote maybe.
You know what? I, I have questions. I wanna know where we stand with E and D, where we're at year-end, where.
But that doesn't, none of that money is affected by this.
Yes, it is. We need to know where we stand, where this money, and, you know, is E and D certified. We are affected, Anna. We can't just use money.
She just told you, we have $404,000 coming from the state.
I never got an.
Still up in the air, doesn't mean we're gaining it, because things have been backing out too from the.
That is a guaranteed.
That happened, yeah.
Guaranteed, non-competitive fund. Like, it's coming to us. The same way the towns got their COVID money, this is our COVID money. It's coming to us.
I'd like to, verbally, I would like to see things, how we're ended the year, where we're at, what our costs are. I am very visual. I like to see that instead of just being told this, because I've seen in the years I've been on the school committee, things have changed.
I am comfortable with it, knowing.
Glad you are. I'm not.
Knowing that our, we, and ended the year in the positive, and that money is available to us, we have $404,000 coming from the state. I am 100% comfortable with whatever it's gonna be, $55,000 plus.
When are we gonna see how our year-end goes in the presentation?
We, we never, never close our books before August 1st anyway. We've never closed our books before.
Transfers before August 1st, but I know our year ended because of this craziness. But I'm just saying, we, where, where's, you know, I'd like to hear from Vinnie. And don't say, that was only the last couple of years.
Right, let's hear from Vinnie. Vinnie, what do you wanna say?
Can I point out I never got an answer?
The auditors are here this week and you are working on it. So go ahead.
Yep, the auditors are here this week. They just left, uh, yesterday. So hopefully they'll have a draft report with some final numbers, I believe, within a week or two. And within a week or two after that, hopefully I'll have a presentation for you with the year-end numbers. So it'll probably be mid-August, uh, if not the, when I come back from my trip.
Alright, Peter, is it a question or a comment?
Well, I never got an answer to my other question about, can bring back someone, if this senior teacher fills this role, can we bring back someone who was laid off? And if we have $400,000 surplus, can we bring back some of the staff that was laid off? And especially in crucial positions.
Well, we have been told that the staff that was laid off have all found other positions, so those specific people might not be available.
That's not true. I know several that didn't.
I can go by what the union president told me, Peter.
Well, I know other staff members have not.
But I think we're spending a lot of time. You guys told me you wanted to keep these minute, these meetings to two to three hours. We're spending an inordinate amount of time on a like $70,000 decision. So.
$100,000 decision. We're talking about $4,000 excess.
If, if we've had a motion in a second, can we call for a vote?
I think, let's call for a vote, and if it fails, it fails. Reverse alphabetical order is, uh, Peter?
No.
Anna?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Stacy?
No.
Dehorgen?
Yes.
Me, yes. Dana?
Yes.
Okay, so that was five yes, two no. So we're good to go. The only question I had was, did someone actually apply for the position? I see the closing today.
Yes, we have application.
Super. So you'll move that forward and get to posting whoever they're replacing. Okay, next. Um, so, I emailed all of you today to let you know there was not an, there was not an exhibit for this adjustment to the calendar, because there are a lot of moving parts. One of those, Mary Beth, brought up earlier, which is that shazam, all of a sudden kids can learn everything they need to know in 170 days. But also provides, uh, district administration, the buildings, and the teachers 10 more, more days to get ready. But we're not sure exactly how to allocate those days. But Mary Beth has da-da-da-da, some news.
So, a couple of things, just so people understand what occurred. Again, on Monday afternoon, the commissioner said, sent out a decision that he has changed 180 days to 170 days. Those 10 extra days are to be used for teacher planning and preparation time prior to the start of school. That's part of the directive that these can only be used before the, the start of the school. Actually, this afternoon, in all of our talking and collaborating, we, uh, John popped into a conversation that we had. So we, we think right now that the, the start date for, for students will be on September 14th. And we, we'll be building out a calendar for you to react to, whether, there's not a vote or anything there. But what I can say at this point, and, and the committee will obviously have to weigh into that, but where we seem to have administrative and union agreement is that the school day, the students would start on September 14th, and teachers would start a day later, which would be Sept- um, August 25th instead of August 24th. And the reason for that is we're trying to line up the calendar so that students start on a Monday. If we were doing this, the hybrid model, trying to start it in mid-week, you could throw everything off. So if we push the teacher's start day off by one day, and we add those 10 days, and we land, um, at a, a student's start day of September 14th. Most, one of the things that I'm really concerned about is getting, is having parents understand as soon as possible that we are looking at a later start day for school. And if the committee saw fit to approve the calendar that we recommend, then the student, uh, start day would be September 14th.
So, which is two days before the mandated date of September 16th. And that, so that would extend our school year by one day. Now, it would shift the calendar by one day. So it would be one day later. And already, we were set till end on a Monday, so it puts it to a Tuesday. And it does not affect graduation, cause graduation was already very, very close to the last day of school. So it doesn't shift that at all. So that's still solid first Saturday in June.
How does it affect, um, snow days? Especially with, um, what we're doing. So what are your thoughts on this, Mary Beth?
Yeah, what I'm anticipating, in previous years, district, districts have appealed to the commissioner to do remote learning on snow days. And that has not been supported. But now that we are in a situation where districts can toggle back and forth between hybrid and remote, the general consensus of the education community is that snow days can be counted as remote days. So we would anticipate having a situation if we have inclement weather and we're not able to hold school in person, we would toggle that switch for that day and have remote learning on, on a day where students can safely come to school. Again, not finalized, but that is, um, uh, work, assumptions that we are making right now in terms of moving forward.
And if that did not work out, if that did not work out, and we had five snow days, that would put us at June 22nd, which is still not so bad, because we made that decision to sort of like front-load our year. So, um, you know, we're looking pretty good. We're looking pretty good. So, Mary Beth, uh, do you wanna talk about how we mentioned that we might be pre-publishing a cup, at least one calendar?
Yeah, so what we can do, um, is that we could, again, I'm, I'm very mindful of parents and people are scrambling, trying to figure out how they're going to plan for the fall. One of the things that we could do is, um, at the beginning of next week, say, here's our recommended calendar. The committee will have to approve it, but this is what we're going to put forth. And if you have any feedback at this moment that you believe this is not something you could support, it would be helpful for us to know. I think that in terms of taking a vote, we should have a fully, a fully, um, developed calendar for you to look at and, and do that in a more formal setting. But if we can informally say to parents, this is what the recommendation is going to be. And again, anything that you would see that would be problematic, be helpful to know that now so we can make adjustments.
Right, so are you, so you're gonna communicate a schedule out next week? Is that a potential schedule unapproved that would be approved sometime in the year?
This is the calendar we are going to recommend to the committee. And what I would say along with that is that the committee was, was made aware of what our recommendations were last evening or, um, last week, depending on when we were able to get that out. And we are, we are not anticipating a problem with it being voted in, if that's something that you feel comfortable with.
But those 10 days are all mandated front-loaded, right?
Well, they can be distributed anywhere within the school year that we want. Or we could choose to end school 10, stay at the same exact time and end 10 days later, but that would kinda suck. Purpose of 10 days is for planning.
And Mary Beth, you said the teachers union was supportive of this plan?
Yeah, I like, I, yeah, cause when Mary Beth and I talked this morning about them starting on the 14th, I was like, but that's 11 days from the start. So by pushing the teacher's start day back one day, which is like, great, like more minds come up with more ideas, that sounds fantastic. Like, that works out, so.
I mean, I think if the teachers are supportive of it, I personally see no, I mean, I think it seems fine.
Yeah.
And Mary Beth, excuse me, Anna, just to clarify, these 10 days are for, uh, instruction as well as safety protocols. Everything that has to do with the teachers keeping our kids safe and educating them.
Absolutely. And so, you know, really looking through, you know, all of the different plans in terms of how the hybrid model would work, what are the safety protocols within the buildings, finalizing, you know, tweaking those protocols as people, as different heads come together. So yes, all of it is in preparation, not only for the instructional piece, but for all the changes that are gonna be, be occurring in buildings due to the new, the new safety processes.
One of the things that the public health nurses said today at the Board of Health, the Joint Board of Health meeting, was just like, we're gonna have to train teachers on how to identify what are the symptoms of COVID-19, and how do you send a child to this nurse differently than if they have, say, a bloody nose? And, and those are big deals, that, you know, they're gonna have to do that. So it's so many little trainings like that have to happen, so. Alright, so, um, I guess, cause this is not a vote, this is just a consensus. If you can raise your hand, if you think in the future you would support September 14th as the first day of school? Okay, it looks like that will probably be okay. So you'll marinate the calendar and send one out.
I think it should be later, just for the record.
But you think it should be on the 16th?
No, I think it should be much later.
The state won't, the state won't allow that, Peter.
Yeah, this, it has to be.
Districts already, I, you know, I participated in the MSAC, back-to-school reopening discussion, and it was statewide, and there are some districts who are not opening before October.
Well, they might be going remote before October, though.
This is not that they're not, this is not that we're going back full steam into the. This is not that they're not, this is not that we're going back full steam into the building on that day. This is the day that instruction will start.
Oh, I see. Okay. All right. Very good. Very good. So. That's fine.
All right. So just into the calendar. So Mary Beth got information that we were gonna have to have a plan in August. And she was like, well, August twelfth sounds like a great day. And then the commissioner was like, by August, I meant August tenth. So, um, I would argue that's barely in mid-August, barely. So we need to meet on August tenth, which is a Monday. Um, so the question is, what time? And when we meet, we will be approving not the plan, but the plan that we will use to open the school. It's not the plan we will live with for the rest of our lives. It's the first toggle on the plan. Um, so does seven o'clock on Monday, the tenth work for people or would you prefer earlier? So if you think, I know Stacy has a problem with Mondays. Stacy, if we go earlier, would you be able to just say?
I can do earlier.
Like what time earlier?
Like three P M.
Say that again.
Three P M.
Okay. So let's start with that. We'll play it like an auction. How many people could do three o'clock on Monday, the tenth?
Can I check my calendar real quick?
Yes.
I think I can. Yeah, I can do that.
Okay, Mary Beth, that's four less hours than you maybe thought. So three o'clock on Monday, the tenth. Um, so community that's listening, we realize some of you are working, um, and we're sorry, but, you know, we're volunteers and we have to try and fit things around our schedules and our work life as well. And Stacy has a standing commitment on Monday nights for her work. So we're meeting with that. We're gonna meet at three. We hope you will be able to join us. This is obviously recorded. You can watch it on H W cam later. And Mary Beth will absolutely publish information about what the school start is gonna look like, um, after our meeting. So. That's good. All right. At the last meeting, um, people said they wanted to organize a uh, finance, capital and turf working group. Um, which is fine. I put it on the agenda. I would like to ask the committee if they feel like that's two, um, committees, just because the turf field for this year alone, um, it's gonna have a little bit more to it than maybe it had in the past with sort of like eventually seeing the RFP through and eventually helping with some of the design. Um, so Michelle Horgan and Stacy have been on it before. Um, how do you feel about splitting it into two versus one where you just have a bunch of people doing one meeting?
I prefer one. It's, um, I was very manageable and I've been on this working group now for uh, six plus, six years, seven, six years.
Um, I would say for this year, keep it as one and then as our needs increase, make it two.
Okay, super. So it sounds like it's gonna be one. Unless anybody objects and, okay.
No, I, 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 but within that though, can a subcommittee divide it to smaller parts? Like, could there be a turf focus to it?
You can't take three. You take, well, I can take three and divide it into two, but what is that, metosis or something? I don't, I don't remember.
But I mean, the reality is it's just a capital project, like.
It is, it is. And it's, it just, some, sometimes that project loses momentum if there aren't people following it. That's my only point. Okay. So, um, so far, everybody here is on a working group. So, um, so Stacy, are you in a working group yet, Stacy? I don't think so. Yeah. Okay. So Stacy, do you want to stay on?
Yeah, I'll stay on.
Great. Um, so.
Can I volunteer?
Yeah, but you're gonna, it's a lot of, I'm just gonna say it's a lot of work.
My.
You wanna be on? I think it's, it's good. Um.
I guess my, my interest.
Policy, Anna?
I'm on policy. I guess my interest is, um, somewhat budget, but, you know, for me, the turf field and the planning of the field, uh, is something very, is something I'm very concerned about. It's a, it's an interest. I'm particularly concerned about Title IX compliance as we design these fields and thinking about our female athletes. So if this is the moment to weigh in and make sure that those conversations are happening to be on this committee, then I would like to volunteer to be on this committee.
Yeah. The last time that was kind of, the design part was taken offline with a group. I don't know. I don't think this.
The design was, um, done separately because that was before the school committee got involved. And actually there were some issues with the design of it. So thus why we have to update the design and study because there were issues that were missed on it. And Craig is looking in to, um, the Title IX stuff and, um, Tom as well. I'm not sure who's doing it at this point. Tom might be able to weigh in, but those are issues being looked at.
That's great, but I feel like having somebody else on our committee paying attention is important too. I mean, but that's my question is that the turf stuff can come, be divided? Then that's one thing. But if not, I mean, to me, they seem like sort of the planning part seems separate from the kind of capital oversight part, but.
It, it probably, it may end up being that way as we get to that point, but the issue is, the issue is finding the time to have meetings and sometimes it's better to like group topics. So.
Well, I would be interested in both budget financial stuff and I'm very interested in the turf field project and all of our athletic fields and all of our athletic compliance issues. So that's an area of strong interest for me.
Dana, are you interested in being on that or not?
Um.
And it's not a pressure. I'm just.
No, not particularly, but I mean, I would if it's a need, um, I would do that. But no, it's not an area of interest.
I, I'd pick it up too.
I, I wouldn't mind staying on either.
You guys are doing policy. Like that is a ton of work. Who, which one of you is on policy, Michelle or David?
Michelle, Peter and I.
All right. Okay. Yeah. Dana. You're on the spot to pick and make a motion, I guess, or.
Oh, I'm not sure.
Let's do that thing again. We have four people, right? We have four people. Let's have people go around and say their top two.
And I'll, I, I'll back off. I thought we were just looking for a third, so I volunteered.
Yeah, but I think it's Michelle, Stacy and Anna are willing to do it. Okay. So make a motion that that's who it is then.
Um.
What happened to, he fall off?
What was that?
I don't see Peter anymore, so I didn't know if he fell off. So maybe he's back. Okay.
Okay. I move that the Hamilton One Regional School Committee, um, form the, this year's finance, capital and turf working group consisting of Stacy Metternich, Michelle Horgan and Anna Seizic.
Um, and a second?
Second.
Second by Stacy. Okay. So reverse alphabetical order. Peter seems to have fallen off. So Anna?
Yes.
David?
Yep.
Stacy?
Yes.
Michelle Horgan?
Yes.
Uh, me, yes. Dana?
Yes.
Yep. All right. Peter's texting to ask if, he was the only one who lost the meeting, so I'll lie, tell him yes. Great. So hopefully he'll rejoin. All right. So that is done. Uh, next. Stacy asked about, talking about when we might return to in-person meetings. Um, I think one thing we should point out is that our teacher design team is meeting in person. Uh, we were invited to go to that leadership team meeting next week, but there's maybe some logistical issues, maybe not. That's all in person. A lot of the decisions that are being made are being done in person. So just so you know, a lot of these meetings are being done in person, but our meetings, um, there are some logistical concerns and I emailed those to you guys, um, from like the public health standpoint and then also from like the legal standpoint. So public health wise, we could all meet together as long as we maintained our distancing. Um, but when we do that, it makes us very big and wide, which would ma- make it very challenging for us to provide uh, real-time access to the meeting because we would not be allowed to allow the public to come because we couldn't control the number of people that would come. And the number cannot exceed, I don't know, some certain number based on the square footage that I can't remember. So I guess I'm gonna throw it out, um, to you guys. If anybody has some sort of strong opinion that we should be meeting in person.
I think it's an optics. The reason I put it out was it's an optics. We're talking about return to school, but then we're, uh, meeting remotely. So that's my issue that, why we haven't thought about it. One of the questions is, one, how much is the cost of keeping it clean and sanitized? If we are meeting in person? And number two, I saw on the, uh, M A S C listserv where anybody who wanted to, um, I guess the citizens comments, citizens who wanted to attend could, um, attend via Zoom and watch. And then we could answer the questions at the very beginning. But then we wouldn't have, you know, during citizens' comments, but we wouldn't have to make, you know, we wouldn't have to answer afterwards because.
But then we would all be sitting in the same room together on Zoom. You know what I'm saying? Like, uh, yeah, we could do that. We could all sit in the same room together on Zoom. But then everybody has to make sure that they're, they have their iPad, their iPad's working and they can do that. But we could, yeah, we could do that. We could do that. Dana?
Um, I, I, I think that there are tremendous logistical problems, but I actually a hundred percent agree with Stacy that if students are coming, i- in the hybrid model, if students and teachers are coming back to school, I think it really does make sense for us, even though I understand that it might be silly in the sense that we're all sitting in the room on Zoom. But I think to Stacy's point, it feels like we should be in person if we're asking teachers and students to come in person and not if, and if they're.
Yeah. And you will have to wear a mask on Zoom in person. So just be aware that those are what you're, which is fine. Obviously I have an opinion. Michelle Horgan.
Again, maybe it's the topics, but I feel that the engagement from the community is far greater on Zooms um, as prior, even though they had access to the TV, um, and maybe they looked at, at the meetings after the fact. But I just feel like we're engaging more people via Zoom. So.
Which, Peter?
I'm sorry, Fios cut out on me as it always does around this.
You were not put on finance.
What was, what was the beginning of the conversation?
We're talking about whether or not we should meet in person. Which of that is we might have to still meet on Zoom, but we would all be in the same, um, space. Tom, Gary is reminding us of the, it's eight people per thousand square feet. But apparently that does not apply to the school committee according to the Massachusetts Department of Public Health.
No. If you, if, if you're asking for my opinion, I think it makes no sense to be in the same room on Zoom. We, it's just not safe. We should just be on Zoom like this.
Then how are we asking kids to meet in classroom if we don't think it's safe? And I mean, I guess I feel kids should go to school and they're the least likely to spread the COVID nineteen, but that's my opinion.
I agree.
I don't know that it's about the safety as much as it is to Michelle Morgan's point about, uh, people participating. The public can participate meaningfully, at least through observing us on Zoom. If we're in person without a Zoom option, the public can't really participate other than to watch it on the cam. So if our effort is to have transparency and public participation, we should do it on Zoom, which then begs the question of if we're Zooming anyway, why are we in person? Is that's, I mean, I, I'm not opposed to meeting in person, but I want to preserve public, um, participation. It just seems redundant. I mean, if we're gonna, if we're gonna Zoom anyway, then let's just Zoom. As opposed to person, I, I agree. It doesn't make sense actually. And I would frankly do it just, the other thing too to consider is that's just another thing for our facilities people to manage. Poor Tom has plenty of stuff to do. Our facility, our maintenance staff has plenty of stuff to do. I personally don't know if we need to create more work for our facilities and maintenance staff at this precise moment for an optical gain that has no net benefit to help participation.
I mean, like, like my issue is that if we meet in person, we're all gonna have to wear masks and be on Zoom. It might be difficult for that to function, for people to, whatever. It might be fine. But you're gonna be in a non-air-conditioned room because we would be meeting in August, you know, when we're not gonna have necessarily kids in school. And, but I get it. I get it. We're at, I have asked Mary Beth if she could put together a tour of a classroom, what it looks like, so that we, um, could go and see what it looks like and feels like to be in that class with a mask and possibly to invite, um, you know, like maybe a selectmen, the boards of health so that everybody gets an idea of what it really is. Because I do understand that people think we don't know what it is like because we haven't experienced being in person. But, um, you know, I get it. I do. I, trust me, I do. I get it. Um, all right. So I'm not sure if there is consensus, so I guess I'll, I'll ask for a vote.
Well, when would it start? That's my question. How soon, like, what's the schedule? When, when would this first meeting take place?
Three o'clock on the tenth.
Yeah, I just, I just feel like the optical gain is not worth the pragmatic cost.
Well, and I guess I want to say, which is the point of deliberation, right? Is that I really have listened to what people have said and I, I do really feel strongly about the optics. But I also, if, if people are really feeling like Zoom is truly serving the public, um, if we really feel like that that's true, that we're getting better public engagement, better public access, um, you know, then for me, that is really, um, that is a real reason to keep it on Zoom, I think.
I mean, personally, I don't think we should ever not be on Zoom again because it, it does, I mean, people will come to our meetings, but people will watch our meetings on Zoom while we're, they're folding laundry, like.
I guess I feel like that that's a worthwhile something to, I, I don't know that I'm ready to decide we're never going back.
Yeah, I agree. No, no, I agree.
I can watch it on TV too, you know, as, as opposed to Zoom. This is the most, I mean, we're supposed to have our meeting and not pay attention to all these comments. And during these meetings, our meetings have been extended because we're looking at all these comments going back and forth. And actually it got to be some obnoxious comments that should not have been put there, that the comment should be stopped. So I'm just saying that, you know, besides the system comments, we're supposed to be able to have our meetings and not be paying attention to all the comments from people.
Right.
That's, this is the first time we've been doing since being on Zoom, I mean, like since we started Zoom, we started doing that. So it extended our times on our meetings.
But that's on us, then that's, we have to be more disciplined.
I think we fixed that tonight. I, I'm like, I don't, because I'm on the iPad, I don't know, but it seems like a lot cleaner.
Our, our meetings got extended because we had a pandemic we had to deal with.
No, 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 no.
That's the reason why we moved to Zoom.
So I'm talking the length of time we start looking at questions. Plus you kind of didn't guide them real well, David. So we ended up having five hour meetings.
But, but, but we, but we've also just as of tonight, we've decided.
We are stopping. We're stopping.
Well, then also tonight we've disabled.
We're gonna make a motion and we're gonna vote. So Dana, when we make motions, we make them in the affirmative. And then if people don't want that thing to be that way, then they vote no.
Okay. So just so for clarity, so I'm making that, that the motion ought to be that we would, um, move back to in-person meetings. And are we gonna put a date on that, at the August tenth, at the August tenth meeting?
Sure.
Um, I move that the Hamilton One Regional School Committee resume in-person meetings, um, beginning on August tenth.
Second. Okay, so I'm by Stacy. Um, we're gonna vote in reverse alphabetical order. Peter?
Do we have a question now?
Yeah. Uh, well, yeah, we can discuss it. Go for it.
The, the same question applies to what's, applies to our teachers. If, if a school committee member is not comfortable meeting in person, um, what happens to the school committee member if we vote to go back to in-person and that school committee member is not comfortable?
We would still maintain the ability to meet remotely, um, and the current, under the current. And the current, under the current emergency order, a quorum does not need to be in the room. So even if one person wanted to meet in person, we could do that.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to bring up the point of a safe versus safer, right? So we can go into a room together and actually social distance and have a safer meeting. Where as the meeting remotely is safe, right? So it, it's, it's the safest one. And I don't think it makes any sense to be, it, I, and I honestly mean this for everyone, teachers and students as well, why we would put ourselves or anyone else at any more at-risk situation when it's not necessary. So, no, that, that's my, my, my view on it.
I, I, I agree with.
Okay.
I agree with David. I feel like, I'm not, I mean, Stacy, I agree with your point of optics. I'm not saying that it's, does, the rules don't apply to us. But as a practical measure, I don't think it helps audience, um, public audience participation. I think it creates more work for our staff and they don't need more work to do. And to David's point, we're going back to school because the state is telling us that we have to and we have student needs. This feels like grandstanding, to be honest. More work, more risk, not necessarily net gain. It's just an optical thing. And I don't believe in doing things for the sake of appearance. If there was actually a legal requirement to do so or something to be gained other than an optical illusion. But I'm sorry, I don't want to do things for a photo op. That feels really disingenuous and I don't want to do it.
I, I feel comfortable going back to a meeting.
I do too, but I don't feel like we need to do it right at this moment, given everything else that's going on. With Zoom participation is valid and it does incur a risk that's not necessary. I mean, you said yourself, it was optical. The whole point of the word optical is it has to do with perception of it. The practical, there's, but there's no practical gain here.
We're not going to debate each other. Okay, we can either, we can each take our turn and then we can vote. So Anna, are you done?
Yes.
Okay, Stacy?
I'm sorry, what?
Well, you were, you were speaking when I interrupted you guys because you were speaking like to each other. So did you still want to say something?
I'm done.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, so we're gonna vote. Reverse alphabetical order. Peter.
No.
Uh, Anna?
No.
Uh, David?
No.
Stacy?
Yes.
So Horgan?
Uh, no.
Oh, don't worry, bro.
Uh, me, no. Uh, Dana?
No.
So for now, we are not gonna meet in person. We will revisit that probably when we have a retreat, which by the way, is not gonna be in August. I should have brought that up earlier, sorry. So just know that that's in the future. Okay. Um, so yeah, Mary Beth, we're gonna have to revisit the calendar on the 10th too, which is kind of a drag. But okay, can we, can we just remind each other about that?
Along with, yeah, we'll, we'll put that on the agenda to bring the, we'll have the.
Great, super. Okay, so we've done that. Alright, so superintendent's report. Just another reminder and if you have anything else to tell us.
Yeah, no, at this point, just want to remind the community that tomorrow from 7:00 to 8:00 PM, we'll do another superintendent's chat. And we'll, we'll look to answer as many questions as we can. We'll do another superintendent's chat um and we'll work to answer as many questions as we can. Um and document you as we evolve. Remember the questions and the the question and answers. I'll do what I can to answer those tomorrow. Many of the questions that folks are asking right now, we still don't have answers to. But anything there that we do, I'll I'll pay attention to that in my initial comments.
And will you send out a um, what do you call it? Phone call tomorrow?
A blackboard connect call, yes, I will do that.
I knew it wasn't connected anymore, but I didn't remember what it was. Okay. Said it?
Yep.
Okay, so for me, um we put in the exhibits that the turf field M O U was signed. Thank you Stacy for really your tenaciousness. Um at getting us done and through and also the reminder to come in and sign it so that it's all executed. It's been given to everybody and it's ready to go. Um. I sent out the request for you guys to do the F A Qs and it looks like people got those into Mary Beth. So we really appreciate the work that you did with that because like Peter said, it was like seven hundred and some. Um questions and I know like I got a third through just one set of questions and I was like, whoa, this I gotta take a break. So there was a lot to it. Um then I had a couple of other things, which was um I I noticed that the Wana Museum has a survey going. About people who might be interested in like having their kids come there for remote learning time and the like. So if you're on and you're interested, go to the Wana Museum site to find out more about that. Um. Went to the Board of Health meeting. It was um interesting or highly complimentary of the meeting they had with Mary Beth last week. And the public health nurses are meeting with Leah Friday um to talk about a lot of those issues. They are, you know, trying to figure out how the D E S E guidelines actually align with the Massachusetts Department of Public Health guidelines. So that's coming up. Uh Brad Hill would like for us to know that they have passed an interim budget. Which takes us through Halloween, I believe, and that was level funded from last year. So the twenty percent cut did not materialize for the next three months. So hopefully there'll be a little bit of extra money left over at the end of this year um for us to roll into E and D for a future use. Um and Mary Beth, we didn't get this on the agenda, but I think for timing wise, we have to decide now. Or we have to decide to let you decide, but there's been a request to use the Bueker School on September first and November third. Um by the town of Wenum to vote. Um so they need twenty days in advance and I don't know if we'd have that if we did it on the 10th. Yes, we would, but just barely.
Um i- i- if you would be comfortable um giving me the ability to make that decision. I would want to reach out to the Board of Health in terms of implication about having lots of people in the school around that. Um and I I also appreciate from the town perspective how important it is to have an answer. Um but given all that's been going on, that hasn't been something we've been able to do.
Yeah, even if you just make the decision for September and then we revisit the other one. After that one, yeah. Um do we feel comfortable with allowing Mary Beth to make that the building use determine? I think building use actually gets made by Vinnie, but um I think the form says it gets made by the Assistant Superintendent. So um does anybody feel the need to vote on this? Great, so Mary Beth and Vinnie will decide who gets to decide and Mary Beth and Vinnie will let the town of Wenum know, hopefully really soon. Okay, that was um and then one other thing, um there's, I was invited to participate in a Facebook Live. Uh roundtable tomorrow about school reopening with someone who's running against Seth Molten that I had met at the town meeting. So just so there's no surprises, I would like to let you know that I am participating in that. And I will only speak my own opinion or facts that I know. Um I can't remember what his first name, his first name is.
Angus McWilken, McWilken.
Yeah, Angus McWilken.
That's the guy. Um that's it. Okay, so then the only thing I think I have to wait for my computer.
Um were we going to reaffirm the turf um M O U?
So that was my mistake. So I I remembered that that needed to happen. But what I didn't remember was the details and the details are once the fundraising starts. So the fundraising won't start until after the, well, there's a study. And then there's a design and then the design will be approved and then the fundraising will start.
They can start the fundraising after the design has been, I mean, after the study's been done, they can start the fundraising. So it will be after, it can go before the design, it's before the design, but after the study. So that we need to get an update from Tom when the study will start and when he thinks it might finish.
In in the scope of what's happening, that can wait until he cleans the filters on the school. Perfect.
It won't be until the school.
Don't mind if I could weigh in real quick on that, give you a little guidance. Um I think it would be who the district to set up a small advisory committee. Once we get over this hump of all of the immediate actions that we need to take. Um having a committee involved with designing the scope for the study is gonna be super important. Especially for for folks that are gonna be fundraising, so it should be a collaborative approach to even prepare the scope for the study.
Definitely. Yeah, well, yeah, maybe like, I don't remember how many people were uh, well, it started out as a big group of people the last time. And then it somehow got whittled down to a small group of people, so we wanna make sure we have all of the stakeholders involved, so.
That that was um the Recreation Department, really, um that whole group really put the last kind of study design. With with Sean Timmons um on it.
Okay.
I have a list I could work on with the superintendent and Vinnie um to be able to bring something back to the committee. Where all stakeholders have a voice in uh moving this project forward.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, we may even just want to have like, you know, booster people, everybody give up a name and then we'll draw from a hat or something.
Would we would we invite any of the uh in-town sports leagues, people from flag or soccer, baseball or anything like that?
Maybe we would, yeah, we'll have to think about that. Like, we should definitely think about who and how big. Cause you don't want it to be, you know, a cast of thousands, but you want it to be a cast of enough, so.
I have a tentative list that I could share through the superintendent at a later date though, so.
Yeah, okay, yeah, like after school starts.
I'm on two of those boards already, so.
Maybe after we decide if we can pass out candy at Halloween. Um alright, so capital has just been formed, so they can't have an update policy. You guys have not met yet, but you will be meeting with Dorothy.
Well, she did give us feedback on those two questions about the chapter. And what the vote on uh following D E S E guidelines.
Right, so I made the executive decision on the chat and that's done.
Okay.
And yeah, but guy, yeah, I think she's gonna come back with some policies, so.
Well, on the, yeah, on the chat, it's just a procedural.
No, 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 in COVID policies, didn't she email you that?
Yeah, she just said a vote, we can just vote, you know, the committee and the district wanted to be clear. That the district will be adhering to the D E S E guidelines, a vote to that effect should be efficient, sufficient. Without needing to create a formal policy.
Yeah, I'm not sure we're at that point. Yeah, I think Mary Beth has to do a little bit more digging before we can decide if we need to be a little more stringent. On those guidelines or if we want to just follow them.
Could we, could we build that into the vote on the 10th language that effect?
But Michelle, don't we need to get the charges from each of the um working groups? We haven't done that yet. So that between the cart and the horse, we need to get the charges.
So that is supposed, that, the thought process was that would be done in the retreat. Charges don't change from year to year. So you can, if you guys feel it's important for us to go out and have the charge reaffirmed, that's fine. However, it is possible the charges will change after we have the retreat.
Well, and did we have a conversation about additional committees we might want to form at the retreat?
Would, if that was necessary, which it may be, like what Thomas was talking about. If if your individual groups that you are on feel that they need to either change their charge or reaffirm their charge and bring it back, that's fine. I do, I I understand what you're saying Stacy, like the, there are no, there are no permanent working groups and they are supposed to have a charge. So, yes. On the other hand, no, because we were hoping to do that all at a retreat.
Well, why not do our goals during the retreat and then, you know, each group can bring in the chart and discuss the charges. Cause that seems like a lot of wasted time to have the charges.
Have a meeting, knock yourselves out. That's fine. You want to have a meeting to verify a charge? Knock yourselves out, boys. I really don't care, but I'm just saying, at the retreat, our goals may need to align. With our working groups, which may mean that they, the charges have to change. Doesn't matter. I mean, we can, you can always vote to say.
I personally don't think it makes sense to affirm a charge if we haven't find the goals, because if your goals change, you might change charge.
No, usually it's ahead and it's in our bylaws to have these charges.
It is. It is in the bylaws. It says we should have the charges that no working group can be formed without a charge. So.
So that's thus why I think we need to get the charges done ahead of time and not at the um.
Again, I said knock yourselves out. Go ahead, have a meeting. I don't really care. Okay, so now we have vouchers on there um. And minutes on the consent agenda. So does anybody want to hold any of those items? I'm gonna kind of admit that I didn't read the minutes. Um.
I don't know if it's a hold or an abstain, but I'm not gonna vote to approve minutes before I was on the committee. So I don't know if you want to hold those or I'll just abstain.
Then it's an abstain.
Okay.
Okay. Nobody wants to hold any of them? Okay, so Dana, you just, you have to say like, you know, we're gonna vote on all of these things and no discussion can happen.
Okay, um I move that the Hamilton Wenum Regional School Committee uh approve the consent agenda. As written.
Second.
No discussion. Okay, um great. Reverse alphabetical order. We're gonna hope Peter's gonna come off mute. Okay, we'll go back to Peter. Anna?
Abstain.
Same, Peter?
Sorry, I'm trying to, my my iPad will not take a charge, so it's dying here.
You vote on the consent agenda?
I am going to abstain because I did not get a chance to read.
Okay, so two extensions. David?
Yes.
So Horgan?
Yes.
Stacy?
Abstain.
So Horgan?
Yes.
Dana? Oh, me, yes, Dana?
Yes.
Yes, okay, so that was.
One.
Four, yes, there's three. Great, alright, topics for next meeting. Um next meeting, we're gonna be approving the school calendar. We're gonna be approving the school's start plan. Um and then we're gonna be putting on a calendar for the school committee to have future meetings. Really would like to keep that tight. Is there anything that needs to be addressed?
I would like to see, um like to know, see what the costs for COVID are so far and what E and D's at. And when we're gonna get certified and um also I want to know a little bit more about where the four hundred, four thousand. Is coming from and um I would also like to verify um about communication. And how we're gonna get that out to the public and who's doing what, because I think there's been a real issue.
Right, I'm sorry.
For communication.
I forgot about that. Sorry about that.
I think we need to really kind of streamline and really get them to go to our um our website. And also make sure that public and Facebook doesn't know the information before school committee members have discussed it.
Okay, I'm not sure what that means, but okay. Um I'll put, I'll put that on that agenda. I just want to be sure people understand, like that is a a honkin' big agenda. You're looking at three hours. So anything beyond that, pack a lunch, because that's what you're looking at. If we start at three, okay, maybe pack a dinner. But um.
Yeah, what, I wonder if it might be possible, the the other thing that I have concerns about our capacity right now. We are booked out for the remainder of this week with the teacher design team. Vinnie and myself are working for a full week. Our leadership team, our our full and intense focus. Is in getting a plan together. Um you know, we, if Stacy, what we what we could do. If people want to pull together a a very quick meeting with a one item agenda, we could go through the finance update. So that people had that. Um but if we could do that outside of the 10th, that would be really helpful from our end. Just because of the capacity issues we're dealing with.
That's that's totally fine with me, but I would like to get it sooner than later because I really would like to know, especially. Do we have transfers coming? Um do we have, you know, vote on the transfers? And where we're standing with our budget from last year, because Michelle's mentioning about how we are last year. I have no idea how we are really last year and where our numbers look exactly. And I am visual, I like to look at the numbers and, you know, where's that four hundred, that four thousand coming from? Because there are, you know.
Coming from the state as a grant, in the same way we get money for special education as a grant. It's been in the newspaper, it was sent to you from M A S C, it was sent to you.
I understand, Michelle, but things are not, you know, it's not always true that it changes. The interim budget has, you know, not been allocated with regard to school or local aid, so that's.
From the budget, it's from the grant from the federal government.
Calm down, don't talk down like that.
I'm just saying, you you know, I I'm happy to discuss this with you. I'm happy to send you the emails that I know you have. But the four thousand dollars is guaranteed.
Uh can I, can I interject? The two of you are debating each other.
Sorry. If we have that, we if we have that, we have to have it at another meeting, so.
So what would be, what would be?
Trying to get married and go on a honeymoon. So it'd be nice if we could give him a break before that and have this after that.
That was really my question.
Yeah, when is, when is our next? Yeah, that's, David, I'm with you. Michelle, after the 10th, I know we haven't officially said it, when would our next potential meeting be? Where we could discuss all this?
Currently, it's on the second.
Of September.
And so, uh and I'm sorry.
And so we will not have that meeting while Vinnie is away, so it will not happen between the fourteenth and the second. So.
Okay, so then the next meeting would be the.
Into that week.
So then after that, would it be the sixteenth then?
Yes, if that's.
I've never seen budget stuff come in. That really is, we've never been that late.
Totally agree.
But we've also never had a pandemic and I'm pretty sure Vinnie's only gotten married once, right?
Zero times, he's gotten married zero times. This is.
I I I think, I mean. Stuff without knowing financial stuff, Anna. So I know you want to vote on it blindly by what's told to you. I want to see that stuff. And that's what.
Give it to you on the 10th, but I'm not gonna be able to go to the leadership team next week if if I have to get it to you by then.
Right, so like I think it's important for Vinnie to be at the leadership team to advise them on the costs. Of the things that they're planning. And also to understand how the costs are gonna roll in. So I'm, I get it. I get it. I believe we should have this information sooner, but there's a lot of stuff going on that's preventing it from happening as quickly as we would like. I will let you know that I attended Manchester Essex meeting, whatever it was, a week ago or two weeks ago. They were just getting their audit from last year. So I was like, what is this? So it's um, you know, we're trying the best we can.
What, one of the things I could do for for Stacy and the entire committee is I can send information. Um that describes what this money is that's coming from the governor and giving you background around that. Um and and what our specific allocation is. I know it's not everything that you'd want, but it would be something for you to refer to and have um more detail on if that would be helpful.
Right, I've sent that already, but you could send it again. Maybe there's more details.
Well, can I, Stacy, is there concern that you distrust the information or you want more detail on it? Because I think that the information, the money has, I mean, to their point, it has been publicized, it's been in the paper. It's been, in my opinion, that information is public information already. I agree that our end of year auditing of books are something that Vinnie is working on actively. But if we're thinking about eyes on the prize, I personally feel like I would like every bit of focus on our district. To try to figure out how to reopen school. I'm not dismissing the importance. I also would like to note those things. But I think the reality is we have a pandemic, we have a wedding, we have remote meetings, we have schedule constraints. I mean, I think there's a point of of humanity that to Mary Beth's initial point of guidance, like this is all very unprecedented. And I think it's, I I personally think it's okay if we go to the sixteenth so that we can reopen school without distractions. So that Vinnie can be present for those leadership team meetings, so that Vinnie can actually try to have some semblance of a human life, like we all do. And then we can regroup on the sixteenth with more information.
On a school committee before, but these are responsibilities of a school committee member. To vote in, to do transfers and to close out the books from last year. That is part of our job. And I know we're in a pandemic and so much going on, so I'm just.
Vinnie, will you be ready on the second or on the sixteenth?
I'm gonna say the sixteenth. I'm not sure if I'm gonna be back on the second.
Okay.
Do we know when the four hundred, four thousand is coming in exactly?
Yeah, I don't know if that's coming in quarter, is that coming in quarterly or is it coming in in a lump sum?
If it's a federal grant, it comes in as we as we request it. So as we spend it monthly, we go in and tell them how much we spend and they send us a check. So they usually don't give us a lump sum.
Okay, yeah, I think Wenum, Wenum was loaded theirs all down and Hamilton's been doing theirs bit by bit. So I think it depends on how you allocate it, so. Okay. So next year, we will do the line item transfers earlier, because next year it's not gonna be this way. But unfortunately, that's when we're gonna do it, I guess, was on the sixteenth.
Has um the government or has, have they extended it and allowed because of the pandemic, the extension? Cause normally it has been said that it has to be done by August, like fourth.
How how about I just give them on on next week? I mean, it seems like it'll end the debate here. I'll I'll have it, I'll have it when you want it.
So next week?
Sure, whenever you want it.
No, cause I need you to go to the leadership team. So, you know, I if we, if it has to happen, then it'll have to be an additional meeting and it'll have to be in the week of the 10th. So.
I would be fine with that if that resolves the conflict to get Vinnie where he needs to be, but who defers to stay, I mean.
I think it sucks to ask Vinnie to work that hard when he's got so many other things going on.
Well, that's, I guess, is there a way we could get a question about the have to, the requirement Stacy's asserting it has to be a certain time? I mean, if that, if that's, if we have a little bit of flow, then I would love to know that, if it's a requirement or not.
I've asked the state that. I've reported that to the state. The state has never given a hoot.
Why don't I, one of the things that I could do for the the committee, if it makes sense, is to prepare just a budget update memo. That put, that looks at just where the funding sources are, giving you a little bit more information. Then then when the, we get the audit all set, we can have a more formal presentation from Vinnie. Uh that would, you know, and I think that might accomplish a couple of things. One is to not have this so pressurized that that we can't do a thorough job of it. Because I think the status of the district's finances, as we know, is a critical element and I worry about rushing that. Um I also understand Stacy's perspective around, I need an update as to where things are. Once we get past the 10th, um you know, Vinnie and I can have a conversation and we can give an update memo to the board. Um and then have that as the first order of vis- of of business once Vinnie returns. But I would want to make sure that he's got enough time once he get returns to do a thorough presentation. I don't know if that would be.
I'm fine with a budget update memo. I'm just concerned about if there's a due day, uh there's a timeline, a due date. That's required for um the transfers.
We are our, we are our auditor's first client of the year. They're, they don't get to some clients until after Christmas. So I I'd be shocked if there's an August deadline.
Yeah, for municipalities, it's July fifteenth. It does not seem to apply to regional school districts. But municipalities, it's July fifteenth.
I thought there was a concern, um it was like the first week in August that it had to be done for us to um week in August. Cause we were trying to figure that out. So I just want to make sure that we're within the guidelines without getting in trouble. But I'm fine with the budget um memo update. Thank you, Mary Beth.
Okay, so that'll come after the 10th sometime before the fourteenth, because that's, yeah, okay. Alright, so we are done. It's late.
I move that we adjourn at ten twenty if we have no further discussion.
Second.
Second, Anna, second stat, um reverse alphabetical order. Peter?
Yes.
Stacy, or that's Stacy, Anna, sorry, what?
Yes.
Stacy?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Me, yes, Dana?
Yes.
Alright, so three o'clock on the 10th. Mary Beth will let us know if we are available to come on the sixth, seventh, whatever that is, next week. So, okay.
Great, thank you.
Good night.